You're all set to begin.
Thank you, Sarah. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Barnstable Town Council Meeting for November 3, 2022. And in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. And I also would like to announce that we are participating remotely. Roll call, please. Town Clerk Anne Quirk.
Counselors Asselus?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Cusek?
Here.
Raprasetti?
Present.
Leveck?
Here.
Ludkey? Mendez?
Yeah.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Shaughnessy?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Steinhilde?
Here.
You're our 12.
Thank you. At this moment, I would like to, if we could all please rise, mute our microphones, other than Councilor Cullen, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to continue, you know, think about and pray for what's happening in the Ukraine, all the things that's happened in the world, our economic situation in the United States, even because in all over the world, because of what's happening. And just want to recognize that for a moment of silence. Thank you. It is now time for our public comment. Sarah, could you please introduce our first person for public comment?
Yes, so there'll just be one moment. And after the first public comment, Lynn Pointeau will be taking over for me, because we've had quite a few people log in since I came over, so.
Sounds great. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't see her yet. Okay, here we go. First up for public comment is Wendy Lavenda Carroll. Wendy, you can unmute, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Barnstable Town Council members. My name is Wendy Lavenda Carroll. I'm a member of the Barnstable No Place For Hate Steering Committee, and I'm also a Barnstable resident. And I'm here to represent the committee. We're an all-volunteer organization that values diversity, equity, inclusion, and works to support the civil rights and human dignity of all people. First, I'd like to thank Paula Schnep, the Vice President of the Town Council, for reaching out to our Chairperson, Eileen Elias, and speaking with her yesterday. She will be in touch with you about some of the things you discussed. But the reason I'm on this meeting is that we want to know, what is the role of the Town Council when it comes to low-cost, affordable housing? We believe that this needs to be a really important decision that the Town Council needs to address. And we feel that it's important to have coordinated efforts with all the different organizations that represent the town of Barnstable. And we were hoping that the Town Council would let us know what is considered low-cost, affordable housing, so that we can have a discussion about this, because we know that living here in Barnstable is really very cost prohibitive to a lot of people at this time, especially our healthcare workers, teachers, and other essential workers on the Cape. So we were just wondering if that's something the Town Council is prepared to discuss, and we would like to, you know, be part of that discussion also.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenda Carroll.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being with us.
Thank you.
Next for public comment, we have Sue Major, or Major. Sue, you have three minutes. You may unmute now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sue Major. I am a resident of Barnstable, and I am here to represent also Barnstable's No Place For Hate, which, as you know, is an all-volunteer organization that values diversity, equity, and inclusion, and works to support the civil rights and human dignity of all people. We are experiencing a major housing crisis, as Wendy mentioned, on Cape Cod. A priority area of our attention for Barnstable No Place For Hate is advocating for the provision of availability of low-cost, affordable housing in Barnstable. There needs to be a comprehensive, coordinated housing development planning process that includes all housing stakeholders, from for-profit, public, and private organizations, all of these together. The crisis is here and now, and we are asking Town Council members to take on your role in ensuring affordable, low-cost housing that's accessible in Barnstable. The other thing I want to mention is Eileen Elias, our Chairperson of Barnstable for No Place For Hate, had sent a letter in July, and it was sent to the Town Council. She has yet to heard back. So I'm asking to please look at that letter and get back to her. We are requesting a response to her letter, and we'd like to know, again, what Wendy mentioned, what the Town Council defines as low-cost, affordable housing. We haven't heard a number. We'd like to really just hear what that number is in some way, shape, or form. Barnstable No Place For Hate looks forward to working with all of you to address this housing crisis, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Major.
Next for public comment is Mary Ann Barbosa. I don't see that she's moved over yet, though, so let me check on her. One moment.
I would ask that if you had a chance to speak, that if you could just sign off and watch the rest of the meeting from Channel 18, more than likely, somebody will respond to you, and you can just watch the response on that. Thank you so much.
It appears that Mary Ann is stuck, so next up will be Susan Conley. Susan, you may unmute. You have three minutes. Susan Conley, you have three minutes. Do you may unmute?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. There we go.
I can hear Susan.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the still picture. I had some pretty intensive oral surgery today, and I don't look great. So I wanted to, I, all right, let me begin. I'm speaking on behalf of our ad hoc community activist group, Save Greater Douses Beach. In the seven weeks we formed, we've collected 652 signatures on a petition to oppose the use of Greater Douses Beach by Avengrid Renewables to land electrical export cables from a future wind farm. I wanted to make clear that none of us are opposed to the development of clean renewable energy, including wind power. But our sole purpose is to convince Avengrid Renewables, and the town frankly, to find another and more suitable location, to find another way. We've been busy raising community awareness about this project, and we feel strongly that these plans were not well communicated to the residents of Ostrville, and indeed Barnstable, very well. But I will say that as members of our village and the town have learned of the project, the dismay and anger we encounter is very real and growing. I'm speaking tonight to ask for two things. One is for the town to disallow the continued work at Douses Beach, which is supposed to begin Monday, November 7, and continue into December, for the following reasons. This week, Avengrid was told by the Department of Public Utilities and the Attorney General's Office that they would not be allowed to renegotiate PPAs or power purchase agreements with Massachusetts Utilities. This was after Avengrid Renewables asked for that and declared that without such permission to renegotiate contracts, the project itself was no longer viable. Those are the words of the CEO of Avengrid Renewables. Secondly, the growing opposition to the use of the Greater Douses Beach area, which is an estuarine environment, very complex, we feel is very inappropriate. A straight-line beach landing for export cables is one thing. To put them on a complex area like Greater Douses Beach that serves as an unofficial wildlife refuge for many species, animal, fish, and fowl, and just a wonderful and beautiful place. We know it's been built. It's not a greenfield, and it's a built environment, but it's a wonderful place for the residents of Barnstable to enjoy throughout the year. There is no off-season, as Avengrid keeps saying. We also know that there's an item on the agenda tonight, item 2023-054, that is intended to authorize Town Manager Markells to begin negotiations with Avengrid Renewables, also known as Commonwealth Wind, to put together a host-community agreement. Given the financial instability of this project, its uncertainty.
Ms. Conley?
Yep.
Could you please wrap up? You are over three minutes.
I'm sorry. And the growing opposition, we ask that this agenda item be indefinitely postponed. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Hope you feel better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sarah, I see Mary Ann with us.
Yes, next up for public comment is Mary Ann Barbosa. Mary Ann, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
You're muted, Mary Ann.
Now I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, and we can see you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I just want to say, we have a problem that is growing in the town of Barnstable. I thought it was a situation that just happened with me a few months ago, but I've learned it happened to a gentleman just the other day. And when it happened with me, we started inquiring. We have a group of people that this is going on with, and I'll explain in detail in a moment. But the outcome is, there's nothing we could do. I did talk to someone from the Town Council. Oh, it's their store. People of color have been going into different stores. A few months ago, when I was in CVS, I heard a pharmacist berating a young man. I did not walk up to them. I'm down the aisle, and I heard this conversation. She ended up, "Don't you know your name?" and just very rude. And then, of course, the great, "Don't you speak English?" I waited until he walked away from her. I then walked up to him to apologize to him. And we're having a private conversation. She walked over, "What did you say?" And I, now that she's injecting herself in my conversation, I said, "I'll tell you what I said. You're rude. There is no way I should have heard what you said to this man down the aisle." "Oh, I'm rude. I'm calling the police. Now, call them, because I'm going to shop." I finished my shopping. The police come in, and they knew how rude she was, but they're like, "There's nothing we could do. She wants you to leave." So I left CVS, but I said, "I will be back tomorrow," and I've been going back. Now, I took it up with other people. I continue to shop. I have learned that several people are starting to go through this with different shops, different stores. Anything they do, if you say, "Wait a minute. Don't speak to me that way. I'm calling the police." The blessing is, we have a better rapport with the police, so they don't come in with their guns drawn. But we know the flavor of this country. A gentleman, and he gave me permission to talk about this, just the other day, went to get his tires changed. They told him to come back the next day. He's an elderly gentleman, keep in mind. They said, "We have to order your tire. Come back the next day." He came back the next day, and it was come, you know, like a walk-in. "Come, get yours, sir." He's sitting there on his car, waiting for it to go in to have his tire put on. In the meantime, he's watching other people be served. A white gentleman comes in, drives in, his car goes right on the lift. Now, the white gentleman, very nice, happened to go over and sit and was waiting with him, and they get into a conversation. He asked the gentleman, "Did you have an appointment ready?" He says, "No, he's at the drive-thru." And he was very friendly, and they talked about it. So now we're realizing there's a problem. He goes back inside to the owner, or the manager, whoever it was, and said, "Look, is there a problem? I've been here. I've been waiting, and I'm watching cars coming in and out." And he said, "Oh, well, if you don't like the way I do business, I can call the police." And threw his keys, tossed them on the counter, and said, "You can get out." And this is happening more and more. When the police come, like I said, they've really been decent. We're not where we should be 100% with the police, but we have come a long way, where there's no fear, but they say, "There's nothing we could do. You have to leave." Well, the frustration is building. And we know we're going backwards. And the reason why I'm coming to the Town Council, because although I did speak to someone privately on the Town Council, it wasn't no one that I'm seeing tonight, they said, "Well, there's nothing we could do." Oh, yes. All these committees have to give a license, some kind of permission for any store to come in. And if this is what they intend on doing, and say, "Well, there's nothing," and we just have to go home and cry, or get so angry that you either go crazy, or you let it go. That's what's happening. I watched this 80-year-old man, well, no, he's not 80. He's close to it. He's in his late 70s.
Ms. Barbosa, this is a very, very important topic. Could you wrap it up in 10 seconds, please?
Yeah, I will. Let me get going here. But I listened to this man, was a very strong man, go into tears, because it was either, do I grab this person by the throat, or do I go home? We're going backwards. Now, it may be no big deal to some people. I know timing is everything. But I would like to have a meeting with someone from the Town Council and other committees, so there can be something in place. It is what people of color used to go through, and they say, "Oh, just ask the police for his badge. We know better than that. You ask them for his badge, and he's going to find another charge upon you." So let's get clear. When I hang up, please, let's try to have a, make a meeting where we can sit down, give me two seconds, where we can sit down, get some groups together, come up with some kind of policy with these people, and just can't do this. If a person walks in and they are wrong, they're wrong. If they're just asking a question, you don't threaten to call the police. That's all I have to say for the moment. I've got plenty to say and plenty to people who want to come forward. So I thank you for your time, and please take this matter serious.
Thank you, Ms. Barbosa.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, but that young lady, like she was very upset with the conversation that I was giving, and I'm sorry if that disturbed her. If you look at her face, it, but that's okay. That's okay. It's real to some of us, because we see time going backwards. You know, a lot of our young people may not understand, but I'm in my, you know, close to 70. I know what it was like, and I'm not going back to those times. Anyway, you guys have a good day.
You as well. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Talk soon.
Bye-bye.
Next up for public comment is Nathan Herschler. Nathan, you have three minutes.
Hi there. I'm Nathan Herschler. I'm the owner of 296 through 302 Main Street and Bread and Roses Bookstore and Cafe in Hyannis, in the proposed downtown Main Street district. And I'm here to just comment with my support for the proposed zoning amendments. The main thing that I wanted to say, and I think this is not news to anybody here, but what I have experienced on Main Street, and what I believe most of Cape Cod has experienced, is that we are severely lacking in workforce housing across Cape Cod. And I strongly believe that the new zoning district plan is going to do good work towards alleviating some of those challenges that exist. I'm sorry, I'm getting a phone call. It's my birthday. So yeah, so, you know, the Barnstable in particular has done a really good job, I think, in terms of providing support for the lowest-income people in our community, and we certainly have enough support and housing for higher-income folks in our community. And the people who are being squeezed out are the middle-class, working-class community that has traditionally been the backbone of the economy of Cape Cod. We have to move beyond a tourist economy to one that is supported by a full-year workforce that can afford to live here. And I do believe that the amendments proposed will go a long way towards addressing some of these concerns. Finally, I do think, just to put my environmental background out there as well, because we have the sewer system in place here, because we have the ability to build density around our existing infrastructure for transportation, this type of zoning that is being proposed is going to be part of what is necessary to become resilient in the face of the ever-increasing impacts of climate change as well. So I thank you all for your time, and I will yield back to the council.
Mr. Herschler, first of all, happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And second of all, just, we may have some quorum issues in regards to this item, so I am anticipating that this item might be continued for a meeting further out. So, but I really appreciate you coming to speaking in regard to this. Obviously, it affects you, and really appreciate your input, and of course, invite you to come back again when the item gets put back on the agenda to speak again. So, and again, happy birthday. Appreciate you being with us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And anybody else who might be thinking about commenting, just so you know, you're free to come, but we do anticipate that the item will be continued. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next up for public comment is Barbara Cosma. Barbara, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Cosma. How are you?
Hi, good evening. I'm not really seeing anyone on my.
We see you, and we hear you.
Green. Okay, there. That's better. I'm Barbara Cosma. I'm actually a longtime resident here in Ostrville, Mass. And I'm calling in regard to the Save Greater Douses Beach Initiative. As a resident in Ostrville, it has not been communicated really well to us as residents here of all of the wind power going through Douses Beach. So I'm just calling to say, I'm, you know, a little bit concerned that this initiative is going on. That beach is very important to our community here in Ostrville. And I just want to make myself aware, as well as many of the other people that I've talked to, that there really hasn't, I mean, they've gone on with the initiative, but they haven't really kept the community informed the way they should be. It's my understanding that they're going to continue working towards putting in these winds through this Douses Beach, even though the public has not really stated that they are truly in favor of it. I know that I have signed a petition, along with many, many other people in Ostrville, stating that we really do not want this location to be one where those windmills are put through. You know, we're not opposed to energy that's not clean and clear, but maybe another location would be more acceptable for us. If nothing else, I just want to voice my concern about how this has not been really revealed to the public as it should be, and the initiative just keeps moving on. So I thank you so much for the opportunity to be able, as a longtime resident here in Ostrville, to be able to voice my concern about this lack of communication.
Thank you, Ms. Cosma. Have a great night. Appreciate being with us.
Okay, thank you, too. Good night now.
There's all the public comment we have at this time.
Okay. That being said, now is time for council response to public comment. Not everybody at once. Council Shaughnessy, please. Council Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Um, as councillors, we received many emails in the last few days about the project between Avengrid and, and Douses Beach in Ostraville. And I want all of you to know, although I currently am in precinct nine, I grew up in Ostraville, so I understand my biggest decision as a child every year was whether I wanted my swimming lessons at Douses or Joshua's. So although I'm not in Ostraville now, I very much have fond memories of Ostraville. What I want all of you to know is that there are a series of four upcoming meetings specifically targeted for you from Avengrid. The first of which is Wednesday, November sixteenth, in person from six to eight P M. At the Ostraville Library. Monday, December fifth, there's a Zoom from seven to nine. Thursday, January nineteenth, we're live again at the library from five to seven. Thursday, February twenty-third, again at the library from five to seven. And then Wednesday, March twenty-second, again via Zoom. Uh, Patrick Johnson is sort of their person on the ground here on Cape Cod. Um, and if you want more information, you can contact, it's patrick dot Johnson at avengrid dot com. So I do want you to know, um, they are planning multiple, multiple, multiple public information sessions for your village. Um, to Wendy and Sue from No Place to Hate. Um, thank you so much for the work that you do do in our town. Um, in terms of, I guess, one of the things you asked is what, what exactly is low cost affordable? You know, truth be told, most state municipal housing programs are based on federal guidelines. So there are different levels of that that you can look up on HUD's website. So they tend to be sixty-five percent AMI, adjusted median income, eighty percent. There's workforce housing that's at a higher level of income. So we don't as a town per se define what that is. Um, but when it comes to funding for that, it's already defined for us. Um, I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of all my councillors, but we are all well aware of the housing crisis in town. Um, we're also well aware of the difficulty in building low cost housing on Cape Cod where the prices of real estate are high, the cost of labor is high. And now the cost of materials is even higher. But I do want, I thank you for speaking out on it. And I want you to know that it's very much in the forefront of our thinking. Um, lastly, Mary Ann, Mrs. Barbosa, what I want to say to you is thank you for going out of your way to stick up for people in the community. Um, it's really upsetting to hear this. Although it certainly helps to know um, that the police have been really good about handling these calls. I had no idea this was a thing. You know, the retail environment I grew up in was the customers already always right. Um, you know, people were kicked out in the context more of bars and restaurants. So it's shocking to me to hear that a disagreement in a shop results in I'm calling the police because I think consumers have a right to answers. I don't know what the solution is. But I can tell you right now, it's not something I'm willing to tolerate in my community. So thank you for coming and speaking out about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Shaughnessy. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Council Azzles, please. You're muted, sir.
I knew that I was testing you.
Okay.
So I want to give an update as well. Uh, thank you to my fellow councillor Shaughnessy for mentioning uh, meetings related to Commonwealth Wind. Uh, upcoming events, uh, Avengrid will be hosting related to Park City Wind. For those who, who aren't aware or have, have maybe missed some of the many meetings in conversation, Park City Wind is the landing site at Craigville Beach. Uh, they will have a in-person open house Thursday, December eighth from five to seven at the Central Library. And they'll be having another in-person open house Thursday, January twelfth from five to seven at the Central Library. And on February eighth, there'll be a Zoom meeting from seven to nine. And on March the ninth, there will be, from five to seven, there will be another in-person meeting at the Central Library again to discuss Park City Wind. And that is the landing site at Craigville Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Council Azzles. Uh, Vice President Schnep, please.
Hey, Mr. President. Uh, and, and thank you to my fellow councillor Shaughnessy and Azzles for providing that great public information regarding Avengrid and their projects. Um, I wanted to address again the uh, two women who spoke on No Place for Hate. Uh, today's was a, a very important housing summit. Uh, over four hundred people attended and I know that President Levesque was there. Maybe some of my fellow councillors were there as well, but it was a packed room. So it was, there could have been a lot of folks there. But there really is a sense, growing sense of urgency that we are losing uh, population on our Cape that are the, the stalwarts of our community in terms of, you know, who, who's, who's in our workforce, who's gonna be taking care of folks. And so, you know, this is really rising to a pitch. And there was a lot of conversation about, you know, what can be done and how municipalities can be part of the solution. And I think that, you know, we are making progress um, in trying to ma, address some of our zoning issues. Um, and it's unfortunate that tonight we cannot, we won't have uh, adequate quorum to talk up about the downtown zoning. But that will definitely be, I think, a step in the right direction. We also have a lot of public processes going on. Um, we're, we're in the midst of our housing production plan. The Housing Committee will be meeting next week. Uh, but I believe on the ninth, it may be a virtual meeting uh, to discuss some preliminary goals and strategies. So again, there's a lot going on. But I can understand this, the frustration that maybe there needs to be more. Um, but please keep in contact. And I, I know Ms. Elias was at the summit this morning and made a, a great comment. So uh, I also wanted to suggest, uh, if Ms. Barbosa hasn't been in communication with No Place for Hate, that really is uh, an organization that is really trying to address some of these, these issues. And it, it's again, it's, it's new information to me, but uh, it's very disheartening if this is what is occurring in our community. And to the extent that we can be helping drive the conversation in, in a different direction, uh, we'll be there. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnep. Council Cullen, please.
Yes, um, a couple of comments. Um, first, I guess to Ms. Barbosa. Um, it's very disturbing to hear that that's happening in our community. And I would, I guess I would do uh, dovetailing off of what um, Vice President Schnep said. Reach out to No Place for Hate and communicate with upper management at those establishments. It sounds like in the garage instance, he might have been an owner. But at CVS, certainly she wasn't the owner. Um, and, and air that out publicly because I agree with you, there's no place for that in, in our town. Um, it's despicable behavior. Um, and then just a comment on the letters and the, uh, the emails and the comments tonight on the Douses Beach um, issue. I wondered maybe if the town manager during his communications could just reiterate what exactly his um, purview is over saying yes or no to this, because it seemed to be a common theme throughout the emails is say no to it, save the beach. I just think it's important to point out what is under federal jurisdiction and what is under town jurisdiction. So that we all understand where the nuts and bolts are in that project. Doesn't have to be now, Mark, if you're more comfortable. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cullen. But I would ask Town Manager Els, if you are more comfortable now, since it is public comment. Um, you feel free or if you'd rather wait, that's fine as well. I leave it up to you.
Well, I can put some comments and then when I get to my report, I'll put, I'll share some more comments.
Sounds good to me. More information, the better, sir.
Thank you for the time, Mark Els, Town Manager. Um, lot of discussion, lot of emails um, relevant to this. And certainly I hope that Ms. Connolly and Ms. Cosmo are still listening. Um, it's really important. I'll just start with something and then I'll get to Council of Cullum's question and then later I'll share some more detail um, with y'all. But um, so right now, there isn't anything specifically pending before the town of Barnstable. If you've, if you've had a chance, and I think many of you had, to take a look at the, the environmental notification form that was filed. And I've recommended to everybody that they, that they do that. And I, I provide a link in my Town Managers newsletter now. This will be the second week. And you can certainly go on to the council's website and mine and access this information in these links. And if you go into the body of that report and very simply jump down, and if you can't find it, call me and I'll deliver it to you. Um, is an appendix D that lays out all the permits. All the entire process for something like this to be brought forward. And as Council of Cullum referred to, you know, it starts really uh, with, with federal policy and a federal discussion and an award of a grant area for, for these wind turbines. And then it moves into a, really a state review process, environmental, project-based and financial. And then ultimately it goes to the commission in the top. So there in about, I don't know, there, there, if you look at, there's probably three pages of that progression through various agencies. So they're on to the top of the second page at this. They've gone through the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and, and other federal. Uh, they've been awarded their grant area. Now they're into the Commonwealth, the state of Massachusetts. So what I wanted to say to you all is, as much as I appreciate the emails I get from all of you. Um, and I do read everyone. Um, and I do take them under consideration as we move forward with commenting. I want you to know that right now this MIPA process is really important for you to, somebody from your group to communicate the same way you're communicating to me in the, in, in the comment period for the environmental notification form. Because that's where the review is occurring right now. And I, I also appreciate that Avengrid is gonna be out there, Commonwealth Wind or Park City. But you also have the opportunity to be heard. And you need to do it. Because as much as you've said to me, stop this, I don't have the authority to stop it. And I've said that when I came to the village and I don't think people necessarily believed that. That's accurate. Really important that you look at the E N F and the comments that are gonna be the most significant are the ones that are linked to the areas of concern in the E N F. Cause what they do with the E N F is they use it to, to scope out what's gonna be in the environmental impact report that they, that Avengrid's gonna be required to do. So your issues need to be heard there. Now, I'm reading them too. And my staff is gonna attend this meeting that's coming up. The MIPA office is conducting a remote site visit on um, so they're going out to the sites November fifteenth. Um, and a hybrid remote consultation on November sixteenth. And the public's welcome at this. Um, and the hybrid session is gonna be at Ostraville Library. So you may already know this. But it is really important that you comment and comments are due um, by November twenty-nine. You don't have to testify orally. You could put them in writing. But you, it's, it's a very formal process. So you gotta make sure you read the document and you do it correctly. So I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. I um, I also think it's important, you know, back to Council of Cullum's request for me to maybe elaborate or explain a little bit here. Um, you know, there, there's an item later tonight, and I still recommend to our town council that they proceed with this. Um, and the reason being that though there are economic changes and though there are economic challenges for this group, they have not stopped proceeding with their environmental or regulatory permit. Therefore, with each, and this is my opinion and there, and, and in discussions with my staff, and therefore I discuss with town council and I make recommendations relevant to this. It is my opinion that with each box they check, they being the proponent, we have less and less ability to get from a project what we want to in the event that they receive all their approvals from federal, state and other agencies. So I, I, we're gonna comment. I got this question earlier, a very good question from a resident. Um, does this stop you from commenting on the E N F? Absolutely not. Whether, whether there's a approval of the manager to proceed with negotiations of a host community agreement? Absolutely not. And we, we are gonna, even if it was approved tonight, there isn't enough time. The last one, the first one took over two years. Um, so we're gonna comment. And we have many concerns. So also the characterization that the town is a proponent or an advocate for this, that is not the case. We look at this obje, objectively, we look at it um, in representation of our community. But we look at it as information comes into us. And in most cases, we're getting this information just about the same time you are. So that, that's, that's what's occurred. There's, there's no way to, you know, frame this any other way. Um, that's the way it will proceed. Whether, whether the town council decides to allow the manager to proceed now or in the future, or not at all. Uh, this will proceed and they do not need our approval to proceed with this. If it moves to the Energy Facility Siting Board, which is coming up very quickly here, so we're watching. Um, when they file with them, they are the state agency that has the authority to award this. Now, one last piece and then I'll stop. I got a lot of questions about what's gonna happen in the coming gaze as far as soil borings. They're saying they're starting construction on the project. What they're doing, and this is not uncommon at all. Contractors um, come to us, especially utilities, and they wanna do soil borings. And they wanna do them within public lands. So they come to us and they ask for permission. And it is very typical that we grant that permission. And if there's constraints or sensitivity, environmental sensitivity, et cetera, we grant it with conditions. We've granted it here. We granted it in the phase one and the phase two project. This is preliminary investigation of soils. Now, you might say, well, we don't want you to stop it. Okay, let's say that occurred. It is highly likely that they would go to the F S B and say, we need the authority to do site investigation and they can supersede us on this. So I, Attorney McLaughlin is here if you wanna get into the legalities of this. But this is the practical process that we are managing. And I am the town of Barnstable's manager. I am not a proponent of any project. I try to look at them objectively. And I try to position us best so that we get to the outcomes, the best outcomes that we can in every situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. That was very clear. Counselor Cusack, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I felt that was very elucidating. So we appreciate that. So thank you to uh, Council Cullums for, for teeing that up and and getting that part of the conversation going tonight. And also to Counselor Shaughnessy and Counselor Azzles for highlighting some of these upcoming open houses that will be conducted. Um, you know, I just want to say to the folks who might be listening and, and especially to Ms. Connolly and Ms. Cosma that I've heard the opposition uh, to this authorization. Um, and I've also, to be frank with you, have heard the, you know, support for granting the town manager this authority. I do want to, to reiterate what the town manager said. This is, this is a judicious next step, in my opinion. And not some unadulterated endorsement of every aspect of this. And not some unadulterated endorsement of every aspect of this wind project. Um, there are risks. This project is slightly materially different than the version of it that we were talking about, let's say, earlier this summer. There is opposition, but there is also support. Um, and I think it's best to get these questions answered sort of under the aegis of a direct negotiation with Avangrid. Um, with the intent of eventually signing this HCA. Otherwise, I think that a consequential portion of this entire discussion will ultimately fall to some state staffers in Boston. Who are totally accountable people and have great jobs, uh, but they're not accountable to the townspeople of Barnstable. And so I just feel like that conversation um would never capture our local concerns. Um, nor would it ever help us achieve the type of community benefits that I think we could get out of an HCA potentially. So this is not the end of the conversation. I will be hosting office hours, like I continually will, to answer questions about this. And then, like has been highlighted by others, we got five open houses that are coming up. Um, you know, I just feel like there's some consensus out there about America's bigger national interests in regards to, you know, greater energy independence. And, you know, the gradual decarbonization of our economy. This project is not a silver bullet, it's just one of a bunch of things that I think that we'll have to do. And unfortunately, there will be interruptions, inconveniences, a whole bunch of things that might not constantly add up, and it will be frustrating. And I ultimately, at the end of the day, or at this point in time, feel like those are really important sacrifices to be made for the greater good. And I think they will set up Barnstable for success in the future. Um, so I will be su- uh, voting in support of, of item two zero two three zero five four later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cusack, well put. Any other counsel comment? Okay, thank you, everybody. That is the end of the council response, and now we're moving on to our town manager communications. Town Manager Els, please.
Thank you and good evening, Mark Els, Town Managers, this is my update for, from October twenty-first to November third. And we're gonna begin this evening with an update from Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development, providing us information on our local comprehensive plan. Director Jenkins?
Thank you, Town Manager Els, I wanted to share my screen. Alright, I am Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, uh, here to provide the town council a monthly quick update on our progress towards updating the town of Barnstable Local Comprehensive Plan. Uh, just as a recap, we are currently in the phase of putting our community engagement plan into action with the idea that all groups, um, all stakeholders in the town of Barnstable may impact the local comprehensive plan through an iterative collaborative process, um, seeking to identify and overcome barriers to engagement. Um, as well as provide people multiple opportunities to participate in this process. As we engage, we seek to develop community knowledge and leadership that will ultimately strengthen our capacity to lead responsible, uh, responsible future engagement. And again, we are, we are committed to consistent monitoring, evaluation, and adjustment of our community engagement outreach to ensure effective planning and representative participation. What are we asking people to engage in? A process that will help us evaluate existing community conditions and our progress towards prior plan, as well as, as create a vision statement. Um, a, a, a set of collective statements that will express the shared values of our community for future growth and development, resource protection. Um, and that represents a way forward for growth in our community. So just a quick recap on our engagement efforts to date, uh, we have been, um, attended community forums and civic associations. Next week, we will be at Hyannis Port as well as the Greater Hyannis Civic Association. And at these meetings, we've been essentially conducting a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats discussion. Um, to get some of the issues that are most important to our seven villages in the town of Barnstable. Um, please look for our community comment walls, um, as well as the opportunity to leave those comments on our map and data viewer online. Uh, some of the other events and communications, um, hopefully you have seen us out there, here's a few pictures of us at Hyannis Open Streets. Um, we were meeting parents with hot coffee at U Soccer to talk to them, um, about the local comprehensive plan. Um, if you had little kids and trick or treated on Hyannis Main Street, you might have seen us. Um, I wanna thank Natalia Froy and Anutisia USA for having me on their Portuguese language talk show. Bate Papo Sobrê Negocios. Um, and we have been holding our coffee with an LCPC member, um, the next one happening tomorrow, I believe. Um, the big, uh, the big announcement, uh, and the project that we worked on, um, with our local comprehensive planning committee was the rollout of our townwide local comprehensive plan survey. Um, the LCP survey is a thirty-three question survey, um, meant to reach all residents townwide. It's a combination of questions that are, um, looking to evaluate current attitudes, preferences, and future perceptions about issues related to land use, housing, economic development, transportation, um, and open space. Again, these are very high-level questions that are helping us get at these, um, at this idea of a vision statement. Um, and again, uh, shared community values. Um, there are also a number of demographic questions in the survey, uh, that help us understand who we're reaching. The survey is available in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. Um, so what's next for the, so I will say you can, um, you can access, uh, the survey on BarnstableLocalComprehensivePlan.com. Um, but what's really next for us, uh, over the next week is, um, is, um, working on an outreach plan for the survey. Uh, both staff, the local comprehensive plan, and we hope everybody in our community. I will note, um, we do have a town council item twenty twenty-three oh five six, which is a transfer order. Um, and that's supported by a note of the LCPC for print materials to help reach people, to inform them about our local comprehensive plan process. And encourage them to take a survey. Um, this item would, would support a townwide mailer, um, to everybody in the town of Barnstable with information about the survey. Signs, posters, postcards, um, we will, of course, distribute information, um, through social media. We've been talking to our school, um, and PTO about partnerships to get this, um, to get this to parents and to the youth in our community. And, um, we'll continue to do tabling events, work with our local businesses and restaurants, um, to help distribute this. And certainly, we hope, um, once we get this rolled out, you, um, you will help us pass out some postcards or, uh, share it in your newsletters as well. So look for these items in the coming week. Uh, also just wanted to, uh, quick update on the Housing Production Plan, which is a required chapter of our local comprehensive plan. Um, as Paula noted, uh, the Housing Committee has started talking about goals and actions, and there will be a housing forum held November thirtieth at six PM at Town Hall. This will be in person, um, with a remote participation option as well. Um, and stay in touch, please, as we continue on, um, take the survey, uh, BarnstableLCP.com. Follow our calendar of engagement opportunities, encourage, um, encourage those in your networks to participate and to sign up for the Barnstable Local Comprehensive Plan Newsletter. Um, our next Local Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting is December eighth at Town Hall at five PM. Um, we're really going to be planning our, what we're calling our Bringing It All Together event. Um, where we evaluate the results of our community outreach and start to, uh, start to formulate um, the vision statement for the town of Barnstable and its seven villages. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Jenkins, and, uh, this point in time, just, uh, any questions for Director Jenkins in regards to that report? Uh, Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, and thank you very much, um, Director Jenkins for that, um, concise and pithy, um, presentation. Um, how do you, how do you, um, after you recruit from, in so many ways, and I salute you for this effort. Um, how do you ensure that people haven't voted twice, or be, uh, how, I'm just envisioning that more passionate people might want to assert themselves more.
I, I understand that there are, you know, when we do a non-statistically significant survey like this, there are always those control problems. Um, we didn't wanna limit the number of responses per address, per IP address to one, because, you know, there might be, we hope if there are multiple people in a household, they were, will take it multiple times. Um, you know, I hope, you know, I, I, I think the chances of, of folks taking a thirty-three question survey, a, you know, a, 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 a large number of times is pretty low. And I think we'll have the ability to, to look at the data and identify any issues that might exist. Um, but ultimately, we hope that, uh, by reaching as many people as possible, any anomalies like that, um, won't, won't skew our data. And, you know, ultimately, what we're looking for is trends and responses. And I think by, um, by, uh, really reaching out to as many people as we can, any, you know, i- i- if, if somebody feels like they wanna take it a couple of times, hopefully that's minimized.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Uh, Counselor Cullum, please.
Yes, thank you, um, thanks for the presentation, it's exciting to see that you were on the radio. Will you speak in Portuguese?
Um, I wasn't, I don't speak Portuguese, um, a little bit of high school Spanish, but, um, it was, it was a great experience. Um, I could speak in English, and then she would translate in Portuguese.
That's awesome, and I'm excited to see the PTO outreach, it's a really great idea because it's direct, it's directly like, uh, right to the parents. Um, without any permission needed, it's just an awesome idea, so thank you for working hard on this, it's, it's just the beginning. It's a, changing the way we do business is a, is a long iterative path, and we're on it, and I'm happy about it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cullum, I actually also had the opportunity to be interviewed by Natalia. So, um, earlier this week, it was a great experience, and, uh, we got to talk about my Portuguese heritage a little bit, so it was very cool. Great opportunity, very much appreciate her, uh, all the work that she's doing, and quite the reach to our resilient community, which is exciting. Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and thank you, uh, Elizabeth, for your presentation tonight. Uh, I know that you're going to each village and, or different village associations, will the presentation of the data, uh, fall into the, uh, different village perspectives, or will it all be aggregated, uh, at the, by the time it gets reported out on December eighth?
Yeah, great question, um, thank you, Paula. So I should, I did mean to note actually tonight that if you go to the webpage BarnstableLCP.com. Um, every time we do an event, we try as quickly as possible to catalog the results of that event and put it on the webpage for people to see. Um, certainly we get requests for that, um, you know, at, at the first couple of civic association meetings. I think, you know, people wanna reflect back on what they heard, so it's been really helpful to do that. So, um, follow along, um, and you can start to look through that. And I, you know, the, the answer, I guess the short answer is, is yes, like we will, you know, I think we wanna look again for trends in data and be able to think about all of those different variables, whether it's, you know, what, what village you're from is certainly one of the most important here in terms of, of the town of Barnstable and, and, you know, how people identify with their community. Um, you know, we've had, had some robust discussions on this at some of our civic association meetings, that yes, obviously thinking about village priorities and village identity is, is an integral part of coming up with the, coming up with the townwide plan. Um, because, because those seven villages are, are the town of Barnstable, so, um, so yes, we, um, we track everything based on the, um, track everything based on the event that we got it on, and, you know, we'll take the opportunity, I think, as we look forward to this, to this Bringing It All Together event. I think not just about townwide trends, but also think about, um, how those have been reflected in, in all seven villages.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnep, any other questions for Director Jenkins? Okay, thank you very much for that report, and thank you, uh, continued success in your outreach and, uh, you know, to, again, I love it, uh, I love that we're going to where they are, so let's keep up the good work and, uh, keep getting good response, thanks so much. Back to you, Town Manager Els.
Thank you, Mark Els, and just to, to continue to support the great efforts of our staff on this local comprehensive plan. In another category in a survey, I was asked by the staff to reach out to the community college. Uh, and if you, you know, I know you know this, but within your strategic plan, you certainly look for us to coordinate closely with the community college, and it's, you know, a significant role here in Barnstable. But they put our housing survey on there. And Elizabeth, I talked to the IT guy, they've had over seventy-five, you know, uh, people go into it. So I hope you get, um, you know, lots of information, but as we begin to discuss other opportunities to communicate, I think any and all surveys, they were very receptive and very much wanna be an active part of what we do here in Barnstable. So, um, you know, feel comfortable, um, certainly Director Jenkins, but all to, uh, use me or go directly if you want. Um, and I know that they are receptive, whether it's a onsite visit, or, you know, or it's a, uh, you know, it's something that they post on their website. So if you go into their website now, um, they have that, but you have to be able to go in. Meaning you need to be a student, or a professor, or a faculty. I don't know from the outside if you just log on, if you'd even find it. Um, that's the one little twist to it, but, um, anyway, so good job, and thank you. Uh, back to my town manager update. We're proceeding with the Budget Action Calendar for FY twenty twenty-four. Public hearing on changes to various town permit and program fees that takes up, that would take effect on January first, twenty twenty-three. As well as on proposed taxi meter rate increases for taxis licensed to operate within the town of Barnstable effective January one, twenty twenty-three. Will be held on November fifteen, twenty twenty-two at eleven AM. The hearing can be viewed on Barnstable's Channel eighteen, as well as the live stream on the town of Barnstable's website. Those wishing to provide public comment may do so by accessing the material through the Zoom link I provided in this, as well as the calling in. You know, if you choose to call in by telephone, you can do that as well. Information regarding the proposed fees will be available on the town manager's page of the town of Barnstable website. So if you go in there, you look over to the right, scroll down a bit, you'll see fees, it'll be in the, you know, the info's right there. I believe it's posted, both the notice and the proposed fee changes already. Alright, moving on to the next item, and I will start this one by saying. Um, I certainly appreciate the attention to all matters in the town of Barnstable. And I know, you know, that, that this Phase Three project has absolutely, and I know will continue to have, um, you know, a lot of attention. But I wanna say to you all that the next item might be one of the most significant regulatory changes that I've seen in my thirty years. Lived in Barnstable for almost forty, but certainly my thirty years with the town. So I hope that everybody will also take the time, and I've received no questions on this. I hope that people will take the time to look at this now. Now. You'll know why in a minute. On June first, twenty twenty-two, the town of Barnstable was informed of regulatory revisions. The Mass Department of Environmental Protection was developing to ensure that timely actions are taken to restore and protect coastal estuaries that have been impacted by excessive nitrogen pollution. Mass DEP is proposing to amend the Title V regulations to enhance protection of embayments and estuaries, particularly on Cape Cod and the islands and southeastern Massachusetts from nitrogen pollution originating primarily from wastewater. And in our case, primarily from onsite Title V systems, and the nitrogen comes from our urine. Mass DEP proposed regulations in, in, uh, you know, it's Regulation three fourteen CMR twenty-one. Provided, uh, provide a wetland, I'm sorry, a watershed permitting approach to control nitrogen and other pollutants from entering the embayments and estuaries. Mass DEP will conduct three public hearings, this is why I'm like calling your attention now, call to action. Three public hearings, one of which will be in person and offer remote in Barnstable at Barnstable Town Hall on December fifth at six PM. Comments on the proposed revisions may be presented orally at any of the three public hearings. I think there's two that offer, um, in person, and one that'll be completely remote. Uh, the link that I Uh, the link that I provide you here will bring you into the information on when those three public hearings are. And I've also provided you the links to these proposed regulations. And we'll keep you advised as this progresses. But this is significant for Cape Cod, significant for the state of Massachusetts, but certainly for Cape Cod and Barnstable. I hope I'm not redundant in reading this one. We continue to review the permits filed with regulatory agencies regarding the proposed Phase Three Commonwealth Wind landing of cable in Barnstable. At the presentation on March seventeen, twenty twenty-two, the proposed landing location for cable in Osterville was shared with the town council. Commonwealth Wind shared said information following their filing for site assessment approval with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. In those documents, they identified their proposed project, including landing and cable route. So, when our public said that we just found out about this, yeah, that specific route was when they filed that permit, and then came to Barnstable Town Council in March with that information. I continue to have general discussions with Commonwealth Wind about, and their, their project representatives, but have not commenced negotiations of a host community agreement and shall not do so until authorized by the town council. The most recent discussions focused on Commonwealth's Wind to request to conduct soil borings along the project route, including Doses Beach, and that they are proceeding with a request to delay their filing with the Department of Public Utilities in order to renegotiate their power purchase agreement. But they have not changed their filing of environmental and project permits for the Commonwealth Wind project. That was what our discussion was about. Sounds as though it was reported tonight that, that, you know, they have received comment back, um, at this point. Oh, I have not had that discussion yet with them. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, Commonwealth Wind proceeded with a filing of an environmental notification form, that's what I referenced earlier, and supporting documents to the Mass Environmental Protection Agency Office of the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. I gave you the links below. The comment period is through November twenty-ninth. I have already given you the information on when the onsite hearings will be. So, please participate in those, and please get any comments. Uh, we will be getting comments in, uh, by November twenty-nine. And I'll refer you to that attachment D, um, in the ENF, so that you can take a look at, okay, what's coming next? And one of the next items is that filing with the energy facility's siting board. That will be very important for us to follow. And I'll keep you advised as this matter progresses. Our planning, uh, and development department, in cooperation with the Department of Public Works, has recently commenced the project Green Streets Downtown Hyannis, a walkable heart for Cape Cod. Once complete in late spring of twenty twenty-three, this project will ultimately result in a buildable plan for how Hyannis Main Street and nearby streets and intersections could be redesigned in the near future. The project intends to achieve several goals relating to the improvement of traffic-related challenges, increasing opportunity for biking and walking and transit, and better facilitating street vitality downtown. We would like to invite the public to the kickoff presentation and public open house on Tuesday, November fifteenth, from seven to nine PM at Town Hall. This event will kick off with a formal presentation by walkable city author Jeff Speck and the consultant team to introduce the project to the community. The presentation will be followed by an open house where data will be shared and public input will be gathered. This concludes the town manager's update at this time. The last item on my agenda is Director Mark Milne providing us with a presentation on the allocation of the tax levy and adoption of the residential exemption, a residential factor. But I would like to pause now, and if you have any questions, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. Any questions to Town Manager Els, please? Okay. Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mark, um, you obviously have put forth how important these Mass DEP regulations are. Will you or your staff be providing any comments ahead of time that we can consider if we, we ourselves want to make comment on December fifth?
I will do my best to share comments as we develop them. I, I am, I'm not hesitant. I am concerned that this is significant, and this is an extremely aggressive timeline. So, as we develop those comments, we will share them with you. And I will continually, weekly, talk with leadership, and if there's a good way for me to share a portion of where we are on an issue, I will do so. For example, if it's okay, um, one of the big concerns I have in looking at it is how this proposed regulation, there's a lot of good in it. They listened to us during their, they did a lot of upfront discussion with us. We submitted in writing some of our concerns. Much of it is reflected in what they put forward. But when you begin to look at shared watersheds, for example, the wholesale side of Barnstable is impaired, okay? Whether you're in Katoit or, or Osterville or Centerville or Hyannis. So, our Lewis Bay is impaired, but we share that with Yarmouth. Centerville River East Bay is in Barnstable. So, I'm, I feel that it's pretty clear how under these regs, uh, once we, once we rerun a, a drill about twenty-year removal of nitrogen with our current plan versus our plan, which is thirty years, you know, how, how effective that would be in, in achieving what these regulations require. But you jump over to Three Bays, that's Barnstable, Sandwich, and Mashpee. Mashpee a very small percentage, but Sandwich a pretty big chunk of Three Bays. People don't think of that, but it is kind of the upper reaches. And then Pompano's and Chewstring is, uh, primarily Mashpee, a little bit of Sandwich, a little bit of Barnstable. But how will these regulations in requiring a nitrogen removal permit and, and recognizing and approving a nitrogen removal plan relate each of the three communities, for example, within that process? So, if Barnstable's flat out, we know exactly what we're doing, and we're doing it, but the other communities aren't, where does that leave us? That's one aspect, um, that is unclear in what I've read. And that's just one. There is, this is, this is a significant document. So, we really need to understand that and hopefully reflect that in our comments. But, you know, if I jump to the far end of my concerns, and I've said this, I know to, I believe the council and the community, but definitely to you and, and President Levesque, that I believe they have a very rigid timeline for approval of this. So, I wonder how much ability there will be to modify. So, that's all. So, that, that's just one. So, I don't know how I can encapsulate that for you, um, along with all the other things that we're going to accumulate, so that you can have a significant comment. Um, yeah, I, I guess I'll try to create something that you would feel comfortable joining me in as our comments. Okay.
The, your bullet did not include a deadline for public comment. Have they published a deadline for when public comment has to be submitted?
I believe the oral can occur at the various, uh, hearings they hold, and I thought it was, just, I thought it was December fifth. But let me go back and check. I don't want to, um, let's see, let me go back and double check that. I know it's in, I, I just don't remember it off the top of my head. But I know it's in the link, uh, that first link that I gave you in, uh, item number three.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Rappaport, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just, a point of information with regard to the, uh, public comments. December sixteenth at five o'clock is the deadline to, uh, submit comment, um, in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Town Manager Els, please? Great report, Mark. Lots of going on. Um, obviously, uh, really appreciate you getting the word out. This is a fast-moving action that's happening with the DEP and, uh, really has long-lasting effects of what's going to happen, not only to town of Barnstable regionally. And, uh, I encourage anybody, uh, let's get the word out, and let's use our Facebook page, let's use e-news, whatever we can. And, uh, is, I don't know if it's appropriate, or some sort of press release to let people know that, uh, we are, the meeting is actually taking place here at Town Hall. So, let's get the word out and, um, make sure that, uh, our constituents, and obviously, this is a big part of it, so I appreciate that. Counselor Cullen?
Yeah, just a thought, since this is such a wide sweeping, um, issue. I wonder if we could somehow use, uh, the new context at the Portuguese radio station to get the word out to another population. I think it's really important that everyone weigh in on this, not just the people that speak English and have access to Channel eighteen or whatever. Um, so, it would be awesome if, if that, if that could be worked out. It's just a thought.
It's a great idea, Counselor Cullen, and that actually is, it was a ending piece of our conversation with Natalia in regards to that and, uh, getting her information and getting her in tune with, uh, you know, the e-news and things of that nature, so that maybe she possibly could even translate. So, um, I will follow up on that with her and, uh, and make sure that that's executed.
There's just so many huge issues that affect everyone. The sewer issue with regard to rents being raised to pay for, you know, whatever costs are having to be offset by the landlord. There's so many issues that touch every member of our community, and those people also need to hear about all of these things. So, um, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I will, I will comment that DEP hearings are very much them recognizing you to speak, you, there's no presentation. There's, um, they open up a hearing, they review what's being proposed, um, sometimes in a very general sense, and then they take your comments. There's no back and forth. Um, so I think, I'm going to yell bad, especially, I think, uh, Counselor Schnep's got me, got me thinking here. Um, I think I'll try to do some town manager updates on this because I don't think people even understand yet the scope of what's being proposed. And actually, we just saw this. I mean, once again, we just saw these regs when the public saw it. I think I shared it that, uh, it might have gotten on a Friday, late Friday. And, uh, like, last Friday, so.
It's past Friday, five o'clock.
When I, when I say that we're truly looking at it, and it is massive, we are, and it is. So, I'll try to do my best to encapsulate it, so that when people get to the comment opportunity, um, they can do so. And, uh, I'll also call them, I know, Director Point, they're going to be putting out a press release to the public, and I know they're trying to reach as many people, um, of as diverse a, a background as they possibly can. I know that they are very attentive to that. Um, and I'll also ask them what sort of opportunity there might be. Maybe I'll get the Southeast Regional Director down here with me to do a town manager, uh, update and put it on Channel eighteen and see if we can get Lynn to help us translate it into as many, um, languages as, as would make sense. Because otherwise, people are going to the hearing, and it's, you know, it's not like your hearing where there is that opportunity to have that, you know, council response, and then certainly a public hearing where people come in and then they listen to your debate. Uh, that isn't the way that this will work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque, and thank you, Mark, for, uh, bringing to our attention the significance of this, um, this regulation and the, and the tight timeline. I'm wondering if there's any benefit. I know you go to town manager meetings on the Cape, and there's the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders, um, group. If it would fortify some common, um, um, requests that, um, coming from the Cape and Islands, um, community, that if it could reinforce, um, points that you find are very salient.
Yeah, we have been actively doing that, and the Commissioner and the Undersecretary of EOEA came down and met with us personally. When, you know, um, Sandwich hosted it, and I expect that we will have a similar discussion as these, uh, move into hearing. So, um, I may host it because it's going to be, you know, the hearing's going to be here, so maybe I'll see, I'll talk to Bud and Bob Lawton and, and the other managers on the Cape and, uh, and, but we will absolutely do that.
Very good. Any more questions, comments for Town Manager Els? Thank you very much, Town Manager Els, and, uh, if you'd like, uh, you can introduce the last part of the town manager report, please.
Sure. Um, again, Mark Els, uh, Town Manager, and with us this evening is Director Mark Milne, Director of Finance, going to provide us with a presentation on the allocation of the tax levy. Director Milne?
Thank you, Town Manager Els, and good evening, everyone. Good to see you all this evening. My name is Mark Milne, Director of Finance for the town of Barnstable. And joining me this evening is our Director of Assessing, Lane Partridge. We are here, uh, as we usually are in November, to come before you, um, to provide you a presentation on a couple of decisions that the town council has to make every year in regards to, um, setting a tax rate for the town of Barnstable. We're a couple of weeks ahead of time this, uh, this year. Um, thanks to the hard work of our assessing staff, we got our values certified earlier this year, and that was purposefully designed because we lost our tax billing vendor, who is no longer providing the services to us. And so, we wanted to get, um, a couple of weeks ahead of schedule this year in order to provide the new, uh, billing service, time to produce those bills for us and get those out. So, um, that being said, um, I would like to share my screen to provide you an update on what those tax levy shift, shift options are. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So, here's our tax levy for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we have a tax levy of about a hundred and forty point seven million dollars, which is what we use to balance the two thousand and twenty-three budget. It provides us just over three hundred thousand dollars of excess taxing capacity, which is a result of, uh, new growth coming in higher than what we had anticipated, um, when we created that budget in two thousand and twenty-three. So, that essentially creates some excess taxing capacity for us in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Um, so what we're talking about this evening is the tax levy shifting options that will decide, um, at your next meeting, how the one hundred and forty point seven million dollars will be distributed, uh, between property classes and within property classes. Here's the new values for our townwide valuation. We have a significant increase in property values, mainly in the residential class. This was anticipated. Um, these residential values are based on calendar year sales of twenty, from twenty twenty-one. And it was a very, um, good residential real estate market, um, in twenty twenty-one, as you know. And so, that has resulted in the residential values significantly increasing. We're about twenty-seven percent of, um, above where we were in the fiscal year twenty-two assessed values. Um, overall, the town's looking at a four, four point five billion dollar increase in its valuation, or about twenty-six percent. Up to twenty million dollar mark, or twenty billion dollar mark for the first time in the town's history. Almost twenty-two billion dollars in assessed valuation. That's one of the highest in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is the breakdown of the tax levy by class, uh, based on those new values, our residential. This is the breakdown of the tax levy by class. Based on those new values, our residential class makes up 89% of our total valuation. So their share of the tax levy is 125.3 million. The balance is made up of commercial, industrial, and the personal property tax classes. Collectively, they pay about $15 million in property taxes. The tax levy shifting options that the Town Council votes on every year will not change the $140.7 million that's raised. It was just to decide whether we, we are going to shift some of that $140 million levy between some of these classes. This new valuation actually results in a drop in our tax rate from $7.85 in 2022 to about $6.43 in 2021. It's about an 18% drop in the tax rate. So the two options you have, of course, first being what's commonly referred to as the split tax rate. This is where you adopt a residential factor. You can decide to shift some of the property tax levy that is borne by the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax classes by increasing their tax rate, making their tax rate higher than the residential class. The second option is an optional election that the council can make, and that is whether or not you want to adopt a residential exemption. The Town Council has adopted a residential exemption since fiscal year 2006 and has been consistently at 20% since then. So looking at the first option, the split tax rate, we could go as high as 1.5, which would result in a tax rate for the CIP class that is one and a half times that of the residential class. There are about 108 communities in Massachusetts who adopted a split tax rate in fiscal year 22, and these are what the shift, these are what the tax rates would look like at various shift levels. The maximum shift we could do in Barnstable is a 1.5 shift, which would result in about $7.7 million more being paid by the CIP class that would normally have been paid by the residential class. And here's an illustration of what that tax bill impact would look like on the median assessed residential property value, which is now $538,100. With a factor of one, no shift, the, a commercial property as well as a residential property would pay the same amount of tax of $3,460. As you work your way up to a 1.5 shift, the residential class sees a reduction in their tax bill of about $215, while a similarly, similar assessed value commercial property would see an increase of $1,727 in their tax bill. And the reason, that's about a $1 savings for every $8 more a CIP taxpayer would pay. And the reason why it's so significant, why there's very minimal savings for residential properties and a significant increase in CIP properties, is because we're predominantly comprised of residential property in the Town of Barnstable. Second option is to adopt a residential exemption. We can go up to as high as 35%. The property must be the primary residence of the owner as used for income tax filing purposes as of January 1, 2022. This option will shift taxes only within the residential class of taxpayers. It will not change the levy amount itself or impact the CIP property classes. 16 communities out of 351 adopted the residential exemption in 2022, and Barnstable, again, has adopted a 20% exemption every year since 2006. Currently, we have about 11,594 residential properties that qualify for the exemption as of January 1, 2022. That number changes every day as people come in and file paperwork with the assessing office. And over here on the right-hand side, these are the 16 communities who have adopted the residential exemption. The ones I've highlighted here in green, Wealthly and Watertown, actually increased their percentages. They both went up 5% from 2021, and Oak Bluffs, for the first time, joined this group, and they adopted a 4% residential exemption in 2022. Again, Barnstable at 20% since 2006. This is how the residential exemption calculation works. We take our residential value of $19 million divided by the total residential properties in town of 25,699, resulting in an average residential value of $758,000. If we applied that 20% exemption that was voted last year, that would result in $151,616 of exempt taxable value for every qualifying property in the Town of Barnstable. And if we have 11,594 of those, that means 1 billion, $757 million of value will not be taxed for those 11,594 property owners. So if that, if that value was not taxed, we have to reduce that from the residential value resulting in $17.7 billion of net tax value. Residential levy doesn't change, it's still 125 million, so that increases the tax rate on the residential class, in the residential class only. And here's an example of what the tax savings would be at different exemption percentages on that resident, on that median residential value of 538,000. For example, at 20%, we keep it at 20%, exempting $151,000 of taxable value. The taxable value on the median property will be 386,000. At that rate of 707, that would result in a tax bill savings of $728 for the median residential property value. And here's, and you can see here, that almost doubles if you were to go to a 35% residential exemption. The break-even point where there is no savings for a qualifying property is $1,680,339. So residential, qualifying residential property at that value would pay the same amount of tax with no residential exemption and a 20% residential exemption. This is the value of the exemption year over year. Last year was the average residential value, 20% of the average residential value was $119,000. The tax rate was $8.64, so the value of the exemption was just over $1,000. Again, this year, it's, the average is 151,000 with a tax rate that would be quite the tax rate of 707 on the residential class. The value of that exemption goes up a little bit to $1,072. And here's an example, again, of the median tax bill comparison between last year and this year. We have a net tax value of 293 from last year, 386 this year. You apply the tax rates to those, and the median property tax bill is increasing about $196 or about $16 a month or 50 cents a day. And finally, here's an example of what the tax bills would look like for various values of median, assessed values of property, for those that qualify for the residential exemption, those that don't, and if no exemption were adopted. So if no exemption were adopted, the median residential tax bill, again, would be $3,460. The average would be about $4,374, and that break-even point would be $10,805. If a 20% exemption is adopted, once again, is that break-even point, no, no change in tax bill for, for a resident that has this value. For the average residential value, there's a slight decrease. For the median residential value, it's about a $700 decrease, and you can see the value or the tax bills for the lower-valued properties receive the biggest tax breaks under the residential exemption program, and that's the way it's purposefully designed that way, so that the lower-valued properties receive the higher tax breaks to the point where you get to this 1.68 million, and there's no tax savings for a qualifying property. Again, for a property that does not qualify for the exemption at these values, this is what their tax bill would look like. And these do not include any fire district taxes or community preservation taxes. This residential exemption that you vote on only applies to the town taxes. The fire districts could adopt the residential exemption on their home if they wanted to. So that concludes my presentation, and at the next Town Council meeting, those votes were scheduled to take place. And in the meantime, if you have any questions regarding the assessments or either one of these options, please feel free to reach out to Director Partridge or myself. We'd be happy to provide you as much information as we can in the next couple of weeks in order for those votes to take place. Thank you. And this presentation is on the Towns website.
Thank you, Director Millen. And I did also want to recognize Director Partridge as well. Thanks for being with us tonight. Any questions for Director Millen? Always good to get the refresher, of course. Vice President Schnepp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark, for the presentation. One of the, I don't know if it's an unintended consequence of our applying a residential exemption, is that multifamily properties are not included in the CIP but under the residential tax rate. And so our multifamily properties are actually taxed at a higher rate than, you know, the exempted residential properties. If, is there any way that we could tinker with that, you know, you know, as we're looking at our housing policy to maybe provide an opportunity for multifamily to get the residential exemption as well? Or would that result in, or would that require home rule petition? Is that a legislative thing?
Yes, exactly. That would be a legislative action we would have to pursue to change the way this program works.
Okay.
Though it's not.
Something we can work on if directed to do so.
Yeah, no, it, it just is one of those, you know, as we're looking to creative in our housing policy, sometimes our tax policy is, is one avenue to do that. So, thank you.
There's also kind of, you know, possibility, Director Millen, I think they did something like this in Provincetown where they have an exemption for year-round housing if someone decides to rent their property year-round compared to doing Airbnb.
Yes, there is an A.D. death through home rule petition. We can certainly create something similar along those lines if directed to do so. I think there's, it's pretty straightforward. We can take a look at that and maybe perhaps make some, do improvements to it as well if we wanted to pursue some special legislation.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Millen. Councilor Clark, please.
I would support going that avenue. If, I don't know what kind of timeline that would take, but I, I trust you, I trust you with the numbers.
And then that's directed to you, Director Millen.
Director Millen, yeah.
Yes, okay. So certainly, we can, we'll talk, we can talk it over with Town Manager and then Town Council leadership. And again, if we want to pursue that avenue, we bring a home rule petition back to the Town Council for your approval before filing it with the legislature.
Councilor Cullen, please.
Yes, just kind of following up on what Counselor Schnepp was saying. I think it's a slippery slope to provide a residential exemption for a multi-unit property because it benefits the landlord. And unless there's a way to make sure that that's actually trickling down to the renters, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know about that one, but I, I do like the other one that Provincetown has done. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilor Cullen. Any other questions, Director Millen? Councilor Cusack, did you have your hand up? Sorry. Okay. Oh, follow-up, Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much. And to, to, to use your example, President Leveck, I want to make sure the credit goes to Betty Lutke, who raised that issue to me to, regarding the affordable residential exemption that P-Town has. I credit her.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Director Millen. Thank you again, Director Partridge, for being with us. Appreciate it. And I know that wraps up Town Manager Communications, and now brings us to the next scheduled part of our program, which is Cape Light Compact Update 2022-2023, Winter Energy Pricing. And we have with us Marielle Marshand, Power Supply Planner, and Brianna Kane, and also we have Director David Anthony, who's part of this discussion and our point person in regards to Cape Light Compact. And welcome. Thank you for being with us, and we're looking forward to Talking Energy.
Thank you very much, Town Council President, and through you to all the rest of the councilors who are here. Just as a matter of introduction, for those who may not know, I have been the Barnstable Governing Board Rep since 2006 and currently serve as Secretary on the Executive Board at the Cape Light Compact and have had the opportunity to work with both Marielle and Brianna for a number of years. And we definitely appreciate from the Cape Light Compact Organization being able to get out and talk to boards such as this. Normally Maggie Downey, our Administrator, would be the person who would be here, but we have capable staff at the Cape Light Compact who can do this. So I will turn this over to Marielle, who I think is going to be doing our presentation, and I'm sure she'll share her, share her screen and take us through, and we'll be here for questions afterwards if there are any.
Thanks, David. And it looks like, oh, I can share my screen now. Can you all see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. As David said, my name is Marielle Marshand. I am the Power Supply Planner at Cape Light Compact, and I am joined by Brianna Kane, who is our residential and commercial and industrial program manager. And we are here to just give you a quick update on what we're expecting to see for energy prices this winter and then to run through some strategies of what can be done to mitigate the expected increase. So just a quick background on Cape Light Compact. Cape Light Compact is a public entity, a joint powers entity governed by a board of appointed officials from each member entity, and those member entities are the 21 towns of Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard, along with Dukes County. And Cape Light Compact was the first municipal aggregator in the United States, and it is the only non-utility energy efficiency program administrator. And so as the energy efficiency program administrator, Cape Light Compact is the MassSave sponsor for the Cape and Martha's Vineyard. And Cape Light Compact really serves three main functions, one of which is a power supply program. So we go out to bid and select a competitive supplier and sign a competitive electric supply agreement with that supplier to provide a renewable power supply option. Through our energy efficiency programs, we offer home energy assessments, rebates, and incentives for residents and businesses who rent and own to make upgrades, to make their space more energy efficient. And then we also advocate at the state level on behalf of the Ray Pairs on the Cape and Martha's Vineyard to ensure that their interests are represented. And so we do that by participating in dockets at the Department of Public Utilities, like the EverSource rate case, grid monitoring station, things like that. And so I am here mainly to talk about power supply. So what are we talking about when we're talking about power supply? And so this is just an example of an EverSource electric bill. There are really two main buckets of charges that we see in our bill. We see delivery and supply. And so as we all know, EverSource is the distribution company. They own the poles and the wires, and they're responsible for getting the power to our houses. EverSource, for the most part, sets the distribution rates, and then those are approved by the Department of Public Utilities. And then we have the supply side of the bill, which is the charges for power generation. And in Massachusetts, since restructuring, customers have the ability to choose their supplier. And so as you can see on this bill here, it says billing for Cape Light Compact. It lists NextEra as the supplier. That's the supplier that Cape Light Compact has currently contracted with to be, to run our supply program. And so on this slide here, we have our current power supply rates. These began in June of 2022, and they will run through December meter reads. And so as you can see, our current residential rate is 16.999 cents per kilowatt hour. I've put EverSource basic service rates there to compare to where less than a cent below EverSource basic service. And our power supply rate changes every six months, so we will be resetting our rate at. And our power supply rate changes every six months. So we will be resetting our rate at the end of November. It will begin on December meter reads, and we are expecting it to increase. I unfortunately can't give you a firm estimate of what that rate is going to look like, but I think, we think it's likely it'll be closer to kind of where we're seeing those industrial rates as opposed to the current residential rate. And that industrial rate, as you can see, was set at the end of August, beginning September. So that was a more accurate reflection of what the market looks like, or at least a closer reflection of what we're seeing in the market now than our current rate, which was set back in May. And so why are we expecting prices to increase? What's going on in the market? And as I said, we are expecting prices to increase this winter, energy prices in general, oil, propane, natural gas, and electricity. And in terms of wholesale electric market prices, they are mainly driven by new, by natural gas. And that's because in New England, as you can see on the slide here, about 45% of electric generation is generated through gas-fired power plants. And natural gas prices in New England have increased nearly 300% since last year. And that's really due to a handful of factors, but mainly the conflict in Ukraine and the fact that New England relies on importing LNG in the event of a prolonged cold snap. And a lot of the LNG is being exported to Europe at high prices. And so we end up subject to those higher prices in the event of a prolonged cold snap over the winter. And then there are a few factors closer to home within the U.S. that are driving higher natural gas prices as well. The demand for natural gas for power generation has increased in the past few years pretty significantly as other fuel sources are retired, such as locally, we see pilgrim being retired. But really more pronounced are the significant number of coal retirements that we've seen. And so in the past, when natural gas prices would rise, coal generators would come online because they were cost competitive, but we're not seeing that happen. Demand for natural gas is much more inelastic. And so as prices rise, the demand for natural gas isn't changing as much. And also, the increased demand is just lowering the amount of natural gas in storage, which is contributing to prices. So one positive that I do have that I think we can look forward to, unfortunately not this year, but as you all know, it's something you spoke about this evening, we do have the offshore wind coming online. And with that, we will be less reliant on natural gas and therefore less susceptible to these global supply and demand pressures on prices in the future. And so with that, I will turn it over to Brianna to talk about what customers can do to try to mitigate these expected increases.
Thank you, Marielle. So as Marielle noted, we are going to see increases in utility bills. And the Compact has programs available, whether you rent or own, whether you are a residential customer or a commercial customer, to help you implement energy efficiency opportunities to reduce your electric consumption in your homes and businesses. This first slide that we're looking at, we're teeing up the income guidelines, and this focuses on residential customers. Want to look at this slide really closely. Many customers that may qualify for some of our income qualified programs may not have ever applied for these types of offerings. If a customer is in the income eligible range, that means that they're 60% or under of state median income. So they might have participated in things like SNAP, food stamps, WIC, Fuel Assistance, or receive like a social security disability. But we have a lot of customers that fall within our enhanced residential income range, which is 61 to 80% of statewide median income. And as you can see on this slide, if you look at a household of four, that means the household's annual gross income would fall between $81,562 and $108,748. So if you think about that, that is a lot of our essential workers, our hospitality industry, a lot of workers that we've heard here today, you know, are trying to stay on Cape. They actually now might qualify for some enhanced income offering programs where they would be able to receive additional incentives that we are able to offer through our energy efficiency plans. One of the highlights is being able to offer customers in that range 100% weatherization. And we also have some really robust incentives of getting people to look towards electrification of their HVAC systems, their heating systems in their homes by offering customers in that demographic that qualify for the program up to 80% of the cost of the HVAC system covered through a rebate through our programs. If customers fall within the income eligible range of the 60% or below, they qualify for the programs like, you know, Fuel Assistance, the 100% weatherization incentives. We're able to offer heating system upgrades, and many, many other opportunities are available to them. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of some of these income offerings that are now available and really kind of look at that enhanced residential income offering. As many customers are not aware of these, of these offerings, and we do actually do on some in-house screening to help customers through that process. Marielle, if you can go to the next slide. Additionally, for customers, you know, and what you can do to help customers become aware of ways in which they can save, there are different rates for residential customers that vary by income. And you want to make sure that a customer can check to see that they are on their correct income rate. And discount rate is what they're called by the electric and gas utilities. This would be customers that are that 60% and below of statewide median income. They are eligible for a 36% discount on their total electric bill, and natural gas customers would receive a 25% discount. There's also ways for customers to set themselves up for budget billing and also enroll in Fuel Assistance, which helps pay some of those costs of your bill. If you look at your bill and you do not see that, you know, you're on the discount rate, you know, please encourage customers to follow up with EverSource for their electric bill and National Grid for their gas bill, if that's what they heat with, to make sure that they get on the correct rate. And we have some information available at the end, but for customers needing the discount rate, they can contact EverSource at 800-566-2080 and National Grid at 800-532-9600. And for those customers that have questions on Fuel Assistance, they can always contact the Compact, but they can also follow up with the local agency here during winter periods of time. The South Shore Community Action Council, there is a Hyannis office on Willow Ave. And their number to call about Fuel Assistance is 508-778-0870. On the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about ways in which the customer can really start to participate in that energy efficiency journey. So with the increase in electric rates, you know, it's really important to see ways in which a customer can reduce their electric usage in their home. And one of the easiest ways that's available for customers, again, whether you rent or own, whether you are a residential customer or a business customer, is to participate in our energy efficiency programs. And by signing up for an energy assessment, we can come out and make recommendations on ways for you to have your home be more efficient, offer you weatherization, air sealing and insulation opportunities, and share information about variety of other program offerings, such as our rebates for heating and cooling, dehumidifier rebates, second bridge recycling opportunities as well. But the first step is to contact the Compact at 800-797-6699 or visit our website, and you can enroll online. We have a residential enrollment that goes directly to the Compact if you heat with oil, electric, or propane. And then we also have a link out to National Grid's online enrollment if you are a natural gas customer as well. Next slide. A few energy-saving tips that you can share with customers and that will help reduce that KWH usage or the electric usage. Setting your thermostat at a consistent temperature, 68 degrees is a recommendation through Energy Star. Additionally, if you have programmable thermostats or Wi-Fi smart thermostats, you know, and you are someone who is in and out of your home, traveling for work, you can also, you know, use that technology to set back your temperature while you're not at home and then adjust it to come on when you are arriving back at home. Some low-hanging fruit items, your ceiling fans, they actually have a switch. They can run clockwise or counter-clockwise to move the air depending upon the season. So in the winter, you want to make sure that those fans are running clockwise. If you can switch from incandescent light bulbs to LEDs, there are still some limited offerings available for those, but it is a smart way to reduce electric usage. You might not necessarily be the one setting your water temperature for your heater at 120 degrees, but that is doable. But if you have, your contractors come out, they can help you with that offering. And additionally, you know, sizing a dehumidifier, we are on the Cape and the Vineyard. You know, we have high dehumidification needs. Some customers do run these year-round. And you want to make sure that you have a properly sized dehumidifier for your space as well as making sure that it's set to the right efficiency. If you have a, you know, older dehumidifier model, you know, kind of those lovely wood panel style dehumidifiers, please look to upgrade to a new energy efficient model. We have a rebate available for that. And then you can really make sure you set that dehumidification level to the appropriate level, you know, somewhere between 30, 40% is the right kind of range for your home. Doesn't have to keep running nonstop to get down to zero. Next slide. Few extra tips, you know, unplugging appliances. It's a small thing, but there is something called, you know, a vampire load. You know, Halloween has ended, but it is all of these additional appliances that we keep plugged in. And while they might be efficient, you know, our laptops, tablets, et cetera, anything that you're plugging in has some type of trickle drop happening. And so unplugging those unneeded items is going to be one way to help reduce. Recent studies have shown that it accounts for about 10% of your, of your usage. So it's actually more significant than it seems. We also have some advanced power strips that are available to customers through the home energy assessment. Remember to make sure if you have a furnace for your heating system that you change those filters. And if you have heat pumps, that you're also making sure that those internal filters inside are clean as well. If you have a fireplace when it's not in use, we have chimney balloon rebate available for customers. So sometimes, you know, even though the damper's down, it's a little drafty. There's a technology, it's called a chimney balloon. You insert it into your chimney, inflate it, and it helps seal up. It's just another way of air escaping your home and just another item for you to consider. Wash full loads of laundry, try and use cold water, and, you know, those little steps can, can really help reduce your usage. I know we're bumping up against time, but on the next slide, we can just put that up for a little bit. Gives our website. Be sure to recommend people call the Compact at 800-797-6699 to sign up for an energy assessment. Or just visit our website and find out about all of the program offerings that the Compact makes available to residents and businesses on Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get that PowerPoint maybe sent to our Administrator Assistant Cindy Lovell so that she can get out to the full council? That'd be great. So thank you for being with us, and thank you for the presentation. Obviously, we scheduled this. I bumped into some, at the booth at the Gateway Cape Cod Airport celebrates America event, and we mentioned this, and somehow we're seeing the fruition of this. And again, with energy costs being where they are, it was good to communicate, reiterate the great programs that you do have. So again, thank you for being with us. And does the council have any questions? Comments? Okay. Thanks again. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice President Schnapp, please.
Thank you, Fred. Just one quick question. If you look at your, if a person looks at their energy bill, is it obvious whether they have the discounted rates or not?
It would say basic service for them.
It would say basic service?
If they're on the default, if they're on the Cape Light Compact supply rate, it says Next Era. Marielle?
But you're asking if, if it's obvious if they're on the discounted utility rate? Is that correct?
That's right.
So yes, they would, it's not incredibly obvious, but you would see the rate code R2 or R4 listed?
And, and so would a person have to request that discounted rate?
They have to request it yearly. So.
They have to request it yearly from the utility?
Correct. So basically, it's an income qualified offering. So every year, you have to submit income paperwork to be put on that discount rate. If a customer calls the utility and states that they are income qualified, they're immediately placed on the rate, and then they are sent paperwork to complete the income verification to keep them on that rate. I strongly encourage for anyone who thinks that someone might qualify for these programs to actually really, really encourage customers to apply for Fuel Assistance. That program offering is, does income verification. It would put them on the discount electric and natural gas rate if they use that as their heating source. But it also offers really, really great resources to those customers. It enrolls them in our, encourages them for a home energy assessment through our income eligible program. It helps actually pay their, their heating bill. And that also does mean a fossil fuel delivery, so they can get money to help pay those, you know, if they're on fossil fuel for oil delivery, as well as cleaning tunes for their heating systems. And it helps leverage additional funding as well as the Compax funding for oil, propane, and electric customers to really get generous incentives so that services can be provided at no cost to those customers for the energy efficiency opportunities. So if a customer had an inefficient heating system, we would be able to help replace that system if it was deemed so during the, during the energy assessment. So Fuel Assistance is where I would strongly encourage people to go. But, you know, if someone is not interested in that, at least try the discount rate, but it is a yearly application.
Thank you. So you're, you're just confirming that if you apply for Fuel Assistance, you will be sent in the direction of getting those discounted rates. You don't have to take another step, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it does more.
And it does more. I also heard that there was recently passage of additional li-hype. I'm not saying it right, but additional subsidy money for, for heating this, this winter. Is that true?
Are, I'm not sure exactly if you are speaking about maybe Department Housing Committee and Development funding or if you're speaking about the IRA funding that may come down.
I think it's state, coming from the state. Well, anyway, I, I think, given the anticipated high energy costs, there's going to be additional funding available for those households that need that assistance.
Thank you, Vice President Schnapp. Any other comments, questions? I've had my house audited a number of times. I've had a refrigerator, I think I had it twice. And I've had a refrigerator return, so to speak, the rebate. And so lots of great programs. And again, if you are listening public, there are other things that I haven't even been mentioned in this presentation that, that are happening in, in programs that are with Cape Light Compact. And so I encourage you just to peruse the website and contact them, have communication with them, and utilize the services that they provide. It's very valuable. And any savings really that anybody can, can get as far as energy, and obviously it's better for our environment. So. Thank you very much for being with us, and I turn it back over to Director Anthony.
Thank you very much, and appreciation to the Cape Light Compact staff who are here. My, I guess my next piece on this, I'm not sure if, if this is an invitation to jump right into the asset management update at this point. I know that we've had quite a bit going on since we started at seven, so I can, I can jump into that and try to move through it quickly in essence to tee up any questions that councilors might have, if that's appropriate.
Yes, please.
Very good. Thank you, Brianna. Thank you, Marielle. I will ask Sarah if she can pop up the presentation for me. Thank you very much. So on our, on our next slide is a brief overview of asset management and some of the segments that are here. There are a few counselors that may not necessarily be aware of who we are. About six and a half years ago, we were broken out of procurement and finance and moved over to the town manager's office. And with that came these six bullets, risk management, loss control, insurance for the town, schools and airport, our energy contracting, property management, which is really the primary focus of tonight's update. But included in that are a series of other town use related items such as the licensing oversight, special events, and also our legacy program, which is monuments and memorials that are around town. All of these make up our asset management team. As we move to the, to the next slide, please, slide, please. In property management, our focus has been divided in to a number of different specific areas. One is tenant oversight and contracting. We have roughly eighty-five contractual relationships with different people, including things like the Cape Cod Maritime Museum, the JFK Museum, Race Lane Farm out Kathy Hill. We have management contracts at Meeting House Farm and also at our Marston's Mills Airport. We have concessions at our two golf courses. These are all tenant oversight and contracting where we support other departments or manage them directly. We also look to do all of the property acquisition research that needs to be done in order to support other town functions. For example, when the cable for Vineyard Wind was going to come ashore on Cubbles Beach, we participated in taking a look at the way that that beach was acquired so that we could make sure that if there were changes that needed to be made up through the state house that we knew where we were, we supported legal on this and DPW as well. Disposition is a major component of property management and disposition includes leasing, licensing, renting, and in some cases disposal. One of the big categories of, of management that we do in conjunction with other departments is our many ways to water. In some places, we have bona fide ways to water where they are well known, but we have a number of ways to water that are kind of lesser known and we try to deal with parking issues. We try to deal with signage issues and access. And certainly we are the place where public inquiries about town land tend to come. We get a lot of calls from realtors when people are buying a property that's next to a piece of town property and they'll ask what the town intends to do with that property. Those tend to come to us. We deal with dumping issues, illegal cutting, working very closely with conservation and marine environmental affairs on that. Next slide, please. One of the big things that's popped up the past couple of years has been our support of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. We were very involved in the acquisition of some of the initial properties, the three ten Main Street in Centerville and the former Cumberland Farms parcel, which is now under construction for the large pump station right at the corner of Finney's Lane and Route twenty-eight. We've also been very much the lead on acquisitions of easements for pump stations. We're working closely with four abutters to Mother's Park currently to try to deal with some easements there for the location of a pump station. And we have about fifteen other properties that we are evaluating in support of Vineyard Wind, Park City Wind and Phase One sewer plans. We meet regularly with DPW to try to deal with some of this. This is really acquisition as opposed to disposition, but it's a key component of what we're doing lately. Next slide, please. So under disposition, we had a number of years ago put some tax possession parcels out for, for sale. We learned an awful lot in that process as to ways that we could improve the process. And one of them was establishing a formal internal review. What we found was that we needed to have a platform where every department, including the airport, including the schools, could have a chance to provide input so that the town manager could make an informed decision and could be sure that everyone had had a chance to kind of respond to this. And I think that what we have done is, is found a system that works. We have put fifteen or twenty properties through this tier one, tier two internal review. In addition, in the meantime, since 2018, the procurement platform has changed and has gone to an online procurement platform, which was one of the benefits of COVID in the sense that a lot of that electronic technology has come much quicker than I think it would have otherwise. But we have now a different kind of procurement platform, which we're going to have to do more public outreach if we do a property sale in the future. Also, we started to focus on finding assets that could be used to solve the affordable housing or at least address in some way some of the affordable housing issues that were in town. And we have a couple of properties that have been discussed openly at the Affordable Housing Trust and we are moving these through that tier one review and are starting to do some of our public outreach on properties that are good, good opportunities to use town property to help bring down the cost of construction so that more of the units on that property can be affordable. And in a couple of the cases, we are going to be coming forward with some town council actions in the next couple of months. We have some that are teed up because sometimes these properties are encumbered with an intended use, either for police purposes or for a parking lot. And what we need to do is, is change that intended use so that then we can take advantage of a general municipal purpose and then make it available to developers. And that requires a, a public process so that it, we don't undermine the intention of why the property was acquired sometimes decades ago. The third, the final bullet on this particular disposition is a year and a half long process to move the Cotuit Elementary School for Water Protection to the transfer to the Cotuit Water District. We had met back in 2020 online during COVID and we had a very robust conversation in two consecutive meetings with Cotuit villagers who were very concerned about what was going to be the outcome of the Cotuit Elementary School. And amidst all of the different ideas that were proposed, the Cotuit Water District approached the town and asked about the concept of dividing that thirteen acre parcel to allow them to get control of the land that was very close to one of their wells. And it meets with the strategic plan of trying to protect and preserve key assets, including drinking water. So the idea started to take shape as to how we could, in essence, divide the property, maintain the recreational component and the village open space component while at the same time coming up with land that could go to the Cotuit Water District. And by doing that, we actually take a liability off the table. There's an eight hundred thousand dollar to a million dollar liability for that school that sits there currently unheated, unused. It would cost anywhere from four to six million dollars to upgrade it to something usable and just a million dollars to take it down. So there's this liability that sits on that property and using the, the idea of money not spent is money saved, we could address that issue of what to do with that wasting asset. So we have been meeting regularly with a subcommittee from the Cotuit Water District to try to work through the potential issues of a conservation restriction of preparing an approval not required to divide the parcel, to try to deal with some of the issues that are there. There's a ten thousand gallon underground storage tank that held heating oil for decades there. It was replaced in the late eighties. It is not likely a problem, but we're going to be doing some testing just to see how that tests out. You could see where a water company would be very concerned about an underground storage tank very close to a drinking well. There's no indication that there's any issues, but we're going to just make sure the septic system leach field would actually still be on town property and not on the school property. So we had to account for that. And the power comes off of Main Street across the recreation property, not from Old Oyster, which is to the west, which is nearest to the building. So we had some real challenges that we've had to work through, but we've had a real good working environment with those folks and we think that we've made really good progress. Next slide, please. So back when we first started looking at dispositions, we looked at tax possession properties. These are properties acquired from a number of different ways. It's not just with foreclosure. We have taken land of low value over the decades. We have taken land with owners unknown. We have had to deal with voluntary gifts in lieu of foreclosure and that first set of tax possession properties that we moved through were the easy ones. And I think we had been very clear that we have some rather complicated properties that are going to need a lot of time and effort and resources in order to kind of clear up. But we have currently eleven different tax possession properties that we're moving through this new internal departmental review. And we still have seven properties that were left from the initial round of sales where we didn't get bids for a variety of reasons. One, we found out that there was a, an unused electrical easement overhead that we didn't find out until we were in the purchase and sale component when the prospective buyer came back and, and indicated that they didn't want to follow through on the purchase and sale because of the existence of this unforeseen utility easement. We had a couple of other ones where buyers simply didn't put any bids in and we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with those. But we have eighteen tax possession properties that we are moving through this internal process with the hopes that we can get enough mass to do another RFP. And there will be subsequent meetings in front of the town council in order to get guidance, in order to get confirmation. We move up through the town manager after we've done some more legal work on these and we should be able to bring a package forward. If we go to the next slide. In the process of looking at our property holdings, when we take a look at what the town holds for property, we've got about nine thousand acres worth of land and about maybe a thousand, thousand fifty parcels of land that are considered municipal, but the bulk of that is conservation land or airport or school property or municipal. But we do have some other properties that we've acquired over time with different kinds of acquisitions. And we have about eight, eight or nine of the non-tax possession properties that we're also moving through tier one that we've acquired with the sense that we were challenged as staff through the town manager by previous town councils to take a look at land that we are currently sitting on that does not have a clear and useful purpose. And if we can't come up with a clear purpose, then we need to decide what should be done. And we make recommendations as staff through the town manager and that's what we've been working on. We've been fortunate that we've been able to identify so far two, possibly three properties that we own, two of them are tax possession, that can be designed as potential pump stations, which means that we don't need to do acquisition. We already own the property, but we do need to reach out to the abutters and let them know what our intentions are. And by doing that, we've been able to kind of repurpose those tax possession properties that didn't have a purpose three, four years ago. But what we've also been doing at many of our disposals, we started to do a more robust use of right-of-way licenses to those businesses that need to use portions of the right-of-way. And we have, of course, our, our major master use agreements with some of the prominent organizations that are in town, the Harbor Hawks, the Kettlers, Barnstable Little League, youth lacrosse, and we've been able to restructure the way that we work with those entities to make sure that those fields, as they're brought up to a higher level through that field study that was done several years ago, as we enhance those fields, that they maintain that high level. So at the end of this presentation, to talk about who asset management is, what we are doing is moving a series of properties through internal staff review with the hopes that we can come forward to the town council in the very near future. Ideally, we should be able to bring a block of properties, hopefully by the end of this year, to put an RFP out. We need to create a mass of about eight to ten properties that we think will be sufficient to get the economies of scale of doing a single RFP, which is what we did back in 2018. So that's our goal right now between now and the end of the year. We're looking at getting to the planning board with the approval not required to potentially have the split of the property. We know we are going through the legal review of the conservation restriction at the Cotuit Water District for that potential transfer. And we're also looking teed up down the road to do some work with the Marston's Mills Elementary School, which is scheduled in, in the next six months to a year to be demoed. And then some master planning through planning and development can be done to, to see what the highest and best use of that would be. There is some talk about using the lower western corner as a site for a pump station along twenty-eight. Again, another use of town property to support the CWNP. So with that being said, I know this was rather quick, but I wanted to present where we are with asset management, what we're trying to do with disposal of properties and some of the other activities that we've been working on as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Any, any questions from the counselors? Director Anthony? And I do expect this to be ongoing, there'll be more things, items coming forward in the next, hopefully coming months in regards to things that were talked about in that presentation. So thank you very much, Director Anthony. Thank you for bringing Cape Light Compact and, and all the work that you do with them. And yeah, look forward to seeing you again. That means things are moving.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, now it is time, Counselor, Vice President Schnapp, please, if you can help me with the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the approval of the town council minutes from the meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We are first. In a second, any discussion? Not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Axelus?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Pollen?
Yes.
Huzak?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Mendes?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
He has actually left.
Oh. Steinhofer?
Yes.
Okay.
That passes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And it is time for communications from elected officials, boards, committee staff, commission reports, correspondence and announcements. Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek. In advance of Veterans Day, I salute our town communication staff for maintaining a lot of information for veterans on the Veterans webpage. And I'd like to remind veterans who are domiciled in Barnstable of our Veterans and Senior Work Off Tax Abatement Program, which was updated at our September first meeting to include veterans and to increase the maximum tax abatement to fifteen hundred dollars a year. And according to Human Resource Director Bill Cole, I asked today, he said only one person has signed up for this program since September. And also, for people interested in shell fishing, due to the Commonwealth's Rave Act, any veteran may obtain a shellfish license in the town of Barnstable for forty dollars, the same fee that is, that town of Barnstable residents pay. I wanted to salute our veterans that way. And also there's notice of a public information meeting about the DPW's plans for the Scudder Lane Boat Ramp renovation project. And that meeting will be held at four o'clock on Wednesday, November sixteenth, in the Harbor View Conference Room at the Barnstable County Complex. And I thank the DPW planning staff for their consideration of the users of Scudder Lane Landing with sensitivity to location, tide and time. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Vice President Schnapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick announcement. Our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee has lost several members over the last few months and have been unable to meet because the quorum is five members because the membership is nine. There has been a request to reduce the membership of that committee to seven so that quorum would only have to be four and we will be moving that request And we will be moving that request through the Appointments Committee process and back to the town council in the next few meetings.
Thank you, Counsel Schnep. Any other announcements? All right. Not seeing any, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back and start our orders of the day, please. Thank you. Thank you, Director Anthony. Any, any questions from the counselors? Director Anthony? And I do expect this to be ongoing, there'll be more things, items coming forward in the next, hopefully, coming months in regards to things that were talked about in that presentation. So thank you very much, Director Anthony. Thank you for bringing Kid Flight Compact and all the work that you do with them. And yeah, look forward to seeing you again. That means things are moving.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, now it is time, Counselor Vice President Schnep, please, if you can help me with the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the approval of the town council minutes from the meeting held on October 20th, 2022.
Second.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Axelus?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Kuzak?
Yes.
Ralph Grissette?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Mendes?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
He has actually left.
Oh.
Okay.
Steinhiller?
Yes.
Okay.
That passes.
Okay, great, thank you. And it is time for communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondents, and announcements. Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek. In advance of Veterans Day, I salute our town communication staff for maintaining a lot of information for veterans on the Veterans webpage. And I'd like to remind veterans who are domiciled in Barnstable of our Veterans and Senior Work Off Tax Abatement Program, which was updated at our September 1st meeting, to include veterans and to increase the maximum tax abatement to $1,500 a year. And according to Human Resource Director Bill Cole, I asked today, he said only one person has signed up for this program since September. And also, for people interested in shellfishing, due to the Commonwealth's Rave Act, any veteran may obtain a shellfish license in the town of Barnstable for $40, the same fee that is that town of Barnstable residents pay. I wanted to salute our veterans that way. And also, there's notice of a public information meeting about the DPW's plans for the Scudder Lane Boat Ramp renovation project. And that meeting will be held at four o'clock on Wednesday, November 16th, in the Harbor View Conference Room at the Barnstable County Complex. And I thank the DPW planning staff for their consideration of the users of Scudder Lane Landing with sensitivity to location, tide, and time. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick announcement. Our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee has lost several members over the last few months and have been unable to meet because the quorum is five members because the membership is nine. There has been a request to reduce the membership of that committee to seven, so that quorum would only have to be four. And we will be moving that request through the Appointments Committee process and back to the town council in the next few meetings.
Thank you, Counsel Schnep. Any other announcements? All right. Not seeing any, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back and start our orders of the day, please. Thank you.
You're all set to go back on the record. You're all set to go back on the record.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Town Council meeting, November 3rd, 2022. We are back. Orders of the day, the next few items. I do believe there are some counselors that need to recuse themselves.
Well, before I do, I just want to say, the more I think about this, I am withdrawing, recusing myself with reluctance. I want to go on record, just to remind everybody, I do not own property in Hyannis. I don't operate a business in Hyannis. My mother lives in Hyannis. She operates business there. I have a brother that lives in Hyannis. I say this because I really feel like, speaking for myself, I would have a positive impact on this topic. I feel the same way about my fellow counselors, who also have to recuse themselves. So I just wanted this on record that I am reluctantly recusing myself.
So noted, Counsel Axelus.
Mr. President, I'm recusing myself on this next item.
Thank you, Counsel Grissette.
As well, Levek, I am also reluctantly recusing myself. I happen to live within the district, which I have to, so I have to recuse myself.
Thank you, Counsel Shaughnessy. You're muted, sir.
Having difficulty with my computer here keeps dropping out. I apologize. Mr. President, I need to recuse myself from this next item on the agenda. I will shut my video off and my audio.
Thank you, Counsel Neary. Okay. So that leaves us with the next. Because four counselors are recused from item number 2022-144, and another counselor is absent, we do not have quorum tonight for that item. And because items 2022-145 and 2022-146 are related to that item, I am opening and continuing items 2022-144, 2022-145, and 2022-146 to individual public hearings to be held on each item at the town council meeting on December 1st, 2022.
Second.
Nope, there's no second. That's just an announcement to be made. We can't vote. We don't have enough people. So I'm just making that announcement that we have to move forward like that. And with that, I would welcome back the counselors that did recuse themselves. And if I could, please, Counsel Axelus, please, could you read to the record item number
This is item number 2023-046, maybe act upon my roll call majority.
046, right?
Yes, 2023-046.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Maybe act upon my roll call majority, authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the town of Barnstable and Seashore Homes Incorporated for eight new market rate residential units located at 63 Main Street, Hyannis Mass, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and we have Director Jenkins with the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levek, Director Elizabeth Jenkins, presenting the request from Dennis and Deborah Mason of Seashore Homes Incorporated for a tax increment exemption through the town's housing development incentive program for property located at 63 Main Street, Hyannis. The proposed project will consist of eight new market rate rental units on a parcel that previously contained office space. In January of 2018, the Barnstable Town Council approved the downtown Hyannis HD Zone in plan, which was authorized and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Approval of this zone and the program, through the approval of this zone and the program, the town was allowed to enter into tax increment exemption agreements. The goals of the H-Tip, which authorized these agreements, are to increase residential growth, expand the diversity of housing supply, support economic development, and promote neighborhood stabilization through the provision of tax incentives for market rate rental housing. A tie agreement is a contract between the property and the municipality that sets forth the amount of the tax exemption and the duration of the benefits. The sponsor has requested a tax exemption, an 80% tax exemption for years one through five, and a 50% tax exemption for years six through 10 on the increased value of the property. If this tie is approved by the council, it must also be approved by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. I will note that the town council subcommittee, I should believe is named to be Tax Increment Financing Tax Increment Exemption Subcommittee, did vote unanimously on 10/3/2022 to support this tax increment exemption agreement. I do believe we have the sponsors, Dennis and Deborah Mason here, should there be further questions or a desire for additional rationale.
Okay. Do we have any counsel discussion? Any questions? Counsel Axelus, please.
I have a comment. At the opportunity to obviously see this, this project a few weeks ago, and I fully support it, I have to say it's refreshing to see a development like this with eight units. It's the kind of development that we need in this town. Also, the fact that there are going to be market rate, true market rate, that I think will be affordable to more of the masses, unlike some projects nearby that they seem to be catering to a different financial bracket, to say the least. This one's much more reasonable, and I think it'll help people who truly need it. And I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Counsel Axelus, and thank you for your work on the tie committee, along with Counselor Steinhiller and also Counsel Callum. Any other comments, question? Counsel Callum, please.
Yes, as President Levek said, I sit on that committee as well. We don't sit very often. We only meet like once every blue moon, but it was nice to sit for this one. I think these people have proven that they're interested in improving Hyannis for everyone. I will say, one of the things that bothered me about this process is that instead of them being able to go to the housing trust for money, they came for the tie agreement because the fees associated with going to the housing trust are excruciatingly high. And I feel like that really needs to be addressed moving forward because what we're doing in lieu of them getting housing trust money is giving them a break on, by using other people's money, taxpayers' money. And that was a real concern. I support the project wholeheartedly, definitely will award them the tie agreement. I just think that the process of accessing funding for fair and affordable housing is, it shouldn't be so onerous on the applicant that they're spending more money than they're getting in order to get to apply. It's, it just, there's a lot of glitches there, and I think that we really need to look at those. So we can flush that out another day, maybe. But so I'm in full support of this project. It's awesome for the East and Main Street. It's going to be perfect. I can see it's already under the median, looking great. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Callum. Any other comment, question? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Kuzak?
Yes.
Ralph Grissette?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Mendes?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Steinhiller?
Yes.
Axelus?
Yes.
That passes, 10 yes.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Deborah. Thanks for being with us. Appreciate your investment in our community.
Thank you very, very much. We're very excited. All right, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks for sticking around.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Counsel Callum, please, if you could, help me 2023-047, please.
Sure. Item 2023-047, assignments to a board committee commission, the Housing Committee Disability Commission. And there's all sorts of things here. So for the Disability Commission, it's Christopher Bartley as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. For the Housing Committee, Evan Gaudet as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. For the Youth Commission, Madeline Boyle as a student member to a term expiring 6/30/2023. And Eric Abagiev, I think, as a student member. Is it good? Is it as a student member to a term expiring 6/30/2024? Is it, as a student member to a term expiring six thirty, two thousand twenty-three, this is a first read, referring it to eleven seventeen, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Councillors, Cullen.
Yes.
Huzek.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Ten yes, it passes.
Excellent, thank you. Next item of new business, Councillor Shaughnessy, please, if you could, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, four, eight.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is new business being referred to public hearing on eleven seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. Item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, four, eight, supplemental appropriation order and for the Barnstable Police Department fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operating expense budget in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars for the purpose of funding the costs associated with the hiring of eight patrol officers to fill current vacancies, as written. Second.
First and a second, and. Do we have Chief Sonnibit?
Chief is not on the Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry, to refer to a public hearing, I apologize, I'm sorry, a little.
You're referring to a public hearing?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, wasn't the last item just a referral to a second reading as well?
Oh, it was, you're right. I was just, I was just voting to referring to a second reading, I guess.
I believe I stated that for the appointments.
You did, and the town clerk said it passed, and I just want to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my fault, I apologize. So with that, that moves to a public hearing, thank you very much. Next item of new business, if councillor Rap Grissette, please, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, four, nine.
Yes, this is a new business referring to a public hearing on eleven seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. Item twenty, twenty-three, zero, four, nine, appropriation order in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand in community preservation funds for the purpose of acquiring conservation restriction on two point three acres of open space located at two, four, two Commerce Road, Barnstable, Mass., shown as a portion on assessor's map, three, one, eight, parcel zero, two, five, zero, zero, one, as written.
Second.
First and a second, refer to a public hearing, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Huzek.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
That's ten for going to a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Councillor Cullen, please, if you could, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, zero.
Sure, item twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, zero, this is referring to a public hearing on eleven seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. Allocation of the tax levy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three residential exemption, as written.
Second.
A first and a second, and again, refer to a public hearing, thank you again, Director Milne for the explanation today. Move to a vote, please.
Councillors, Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Huzek.
Yes.
To a public hearing, ten yes.
Thank you very much. Councillor Clark, please, twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, one.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is new business to be referred to a public hearing on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Agenda item twenty, twenty-three dash zero, one, five, allocation of tax levy fiscal year two thousand twenty-three tax factor resolved that the town council hereby votes to classify the town of Barnstable under Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, the Classification Act, at a residential factor of one for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Bring in a first and a second, and refer to a public hearing, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Levesque.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
I think he lost connection.
Okay.
He's logging right, right back in now, I'll have him in the room in fifteen seconds.
We'll go back to him.
Okay. Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Huzek.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
And we're back to Mr. Neary.
Yes.
Just a naked time, nice timing, sir. Ten.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As, as a point of order, did we fail to vote on oh, four, eight to move it to public hearing on the seventeenth?
I think so.
I feel like we did not vote.
Oh, you know what, you are right. Because it was a correction on what I was looking for, and we just.
On the prior item.
Right.
You are correct. But turning over, do I need to reread the item, can we just vote?
I think you can just vote it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, excellent, so this is in regards to item number two, zero, two, three dash zero, four, eight. It's been read as referred to a public hearing, and then we can move to a vote, please, thank you for that, Council Shaughnessy. Been a long day.
Councillors. Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yeah, yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Huzek.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
We got, and that's it, ten, ten to move it to another hearing.
Thank you very much. Council Signe, please.
Another point?
Yes.
I think there's eleven councillors on the dais right now. And I've been hearing ten, so I just wanted to correct that.
Is councillor Star back?
No. He left.
Yeah, but we're just down left key and star, right?
Yeah.
So that's, that's, so we should have eleven.
Yes, you're right.
So we're good, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you for that, Vice President Schnapp, Councillor Steinheilber, please, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, two.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to refer this item to a public hearing on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, two, probation and loan order in the amount of two million, eight hundred, fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding design and permitting of the water pollution control facility headworks improvement project, as written.
Second.
First and a second, refer to a public hearing, move to a vote, please.
Councillors, Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Huzek.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
That would be eleven. She went on a meeting.
The Utown Clerk Ann Quirk. Okay. Councillor Mendes, please, if you could, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, three.
This is item, new business, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, three. May be acted upon roll call majority. Transfer order in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars from the Department of Public Works fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. General Fund Personal Budget to Department of Public Works General Fund Operating Capital Budget for the purpose of acquiring and installing new furniture and partitions in the town assessing office.
Second.
And we have first and a second, and we have both Director Santos and Director Patric with the rationale, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and members of the town council, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. The Department of Public Works has been consolidating town offices within the town hall and school administration buildings. Town Hall Restroom Improvement Project included improvements in asbestos remediation in the existing assessor's office. The old assessor's office area contained outdated desks, desks made out of tabletops and file cabinets, and other odds and ends accumulated over the years. Most of the furniture is oversized by today's standards and is designed for desktop computers. Physical and security improvements to the space are now complete, but consolidation efforts require new furniture to fit the number of employees into the space that are now planned. Therefore, new appropriately designed and sized furniture is required for the assessor's office in order to fit the required number of employees into that space. Funding for this transfer will be provided from existing vacancy savings within the general fund personal, personnel budget of the Department of Public Works. The department has experienced turnover in several positions and currently has thirteen vacancies. As a result of the turnover in current vacancies, the estimated personnel savings to date is, is in excess of four hundred, fifty thousand dollars. A portion of this savings is requested to fund this one-time expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council discussion? This is a public, actually, I'm sorry, is a public hearing, do we have anybody for public comment?
It, it's not a public, is it a public hear? I don't think it's a public hearing.
Oh, it says it in the, sorry, it says it in the index at the bottom of the page, so. Okay, so I'm not hearing that, any council discussion, please? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Azzalus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Huzek.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. And that one's.
President Levesque, I'd just like to thank you and the council for that vote. My employees would be very happy to hear this news, and I would like to especially thank Director Santos for his generosity.
Thank you, and, and, and I will say, the town hall is looking great, so the the project's definitely moving along, all the bathrooms look fantastic, and the offices are really, really look much improved, so, and, and I can definitely see why desks that were designed for desktops are, have become obsolete, so. Again, appreciate you being with us, thanks for sticking around, and appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item of new business, Vice President Schnapp, please, if you could, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, four.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is an item of new business, item number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, four. Resolve authorizing the town manager to commence negotiations with Commonwealth Wind LLC for a new host community agreement. May be acted upon by a roll call majority, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and. Town Manager Els.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. I've requested the town council to consider this resolve for the town manager to commence negotiations with Commonwealth Wind for a new host community agreement relevant to this proposed project. Commonwealth Wind continues forward with their permitting of this proposed project, as we discussed earlier this evening. It is my recommendation that it is appropriate for your consideration of this request so that we can sit down and discuss those important issues for the town relative to this project, if it proceeds successfully through permitting. If you have any questions, more than happy to answer it, thank you.
I appreciate that, any councillor discussion questions? Obviously, this is been talked about tonight, and equate good amount of detail. Anybody have any questions, Councillor Azzalos?
This is more just asking for a reiteration of points you made earlier, and also in previous meetings, and so on and so forth. Hey, somebody's just getting on and viewing for the first time tonight. We are not, by voting for this resolve, should it, should it pass, we are not giving approvals and or permission for this particular project to move forward, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Would you like me to summarize more, or are you comfortable?
I certainly would, for those who somehow are getting information from others other than reliable sources, yes, please, thank you.
Of course, thank you for the opportunity, again, Mark Els, Town Manager. The, the, the proposed project falls within the jurisdiction and the authority of federal, state, and to a lesser degree, some limited aspects, county, local. So the proponent has proceeded with, and these are very general categories. They have proceeded with securing a grant area south of Martha's Vineyard, southeast, south, southeast of Martha's Vineyard, to erect wind turbines. And this proposed project would run cable from those turbines in that grant area, and that was federal approved run cable to a proposed landing location in Osterville at Dosus Beach. That was filed with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and has gone through other federal agencies. And much of the jurisdiction relevant to that is related to, to geographic areas that are not within, certainly, the town of Barnstable or our authority. That has progressed, it is not completed yet. Aspects of it are not completed yet. They have also proceeded to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They have filed with the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency Office, looking with it, with what they refer to as a environmental notification form, which is really an opportunity for state agencies and others to comment on the proposed project as it is outlined in that environmental notification form. From that, those comments, and I believe that there are, they, they look at whether it moves to a more, more scrutinized environmental evaluation called an environmental impact report. I believe they are categorically included, but it's still important that we make comment on all, any and all of those areas where we have concern, and we want to have project-related answers provided. So. it goes through that process, and I referenced earlier this evening that that'll conclude, though that comment period will conclude November twenty-ninth, and there's some upcoming hearings onsite. They're actually not hearings, they're site visits. And information sessions and information gathering sessions by MIBA on the fourteenth and the fifteenth. So please refer back to the town manager's report. You can find the links to that information if you want more. Next step will be, I believe, as outlined for us in that ENF, in that attachment D, will be with the energy facilities citing board. So the point in going through this with you is that that is proceeding, and we really have no authority over this. Once they commence this regulatory review of environmental and project-related approvals, I made a recommendation to town council that we proceed with host community, host community agreement discussions so that we can be sitting at the table with them and making sure that those things that are important to our community are reflected in what they're proposing to do. We did this in the first phase, we did it in the second phase, and now I'm requesting it for your consideration in the third phase. As already asked by Consulate Axelus, this is, this is not an approval of the project, nor do I have the ability to sign into this host agreement. I will bring this back to town council and review it in draft with town council, and then ask town council for authority, if appropriate, to sign that. If the project stops for other reasons, that has been brought up recently, so I bring it up. I will bring that information back to council with a recommendation on how to proceed. At this point, I am recommending to you that you authorize the town manager to commence those discussions with Commonwealth Wind for a host community agreement. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. Any other comment, question? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
That's eleven yeses.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item of new business. Councillor Steinheber, please. Item number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five five.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five five. Resolution that the town council petition the county commissioners of Barnstable County to formally discontinue a section of county highway, namely Mother's Park Road, as described in the Commissioners January ninth, nineteen twelve, taking number six four two of Finney's Lane and North Main Street and Mother's Park Road in Barnstable, as written.
Second.
First and a second, and we have Attorney Charlie McLaughlin with the rationale, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. The background is very similar to other discontinuances at the county level that we have asked for. Mother's Park Road in Barnstable was laid out as a county road in nineteen thirty-two, and it was depicting an original January nineteen twelve highway layout. It has not been maintained by the county for generations, and it is needed to accommodate the town's sewer expansion program. It is, and is necessary to request the county to abandon it, and upon the granting of that request, the town would take the road over as a public road, and the town would agree in this process to maintain it as such. As I mentioned last, in our last meeting, that request is critical that at this point, when the county abandons, we need to affirmatively state that we're going to take it over and maintain it as a roadway. The, as with the other roads, this is particularly a vital route for the sewer line that will be installed by the town. Chapter eighty-two, section five establishes the clear procedure for obtaining this discontinuance by petition to the town, of the town, to the county, requesting that the county discontinue the public way, and then it becomes a public way which we will maintain. The fiscal impact on it is basically none. The town has operated for years and in practice, in the belief that Mother's Park was a town-owned road. As research continues into the various areas of town where sewer piping will be proposed, we're paying more and more attention, obviously, to the areas of town that have been defined as taken by the county and asking for discontinuances, and this is one of those. So we would ask for your vote. I will point out quickly, in addition to the printed rationale, this is going to be a two-step process. The first step is obviously tonight, we will then, if we have a vote, we will go to the county very shortly and ask for a discontinuance. That would, as I said, leave this roadway, Mother's Park Road, then as a townway. There will be a second step that we will back to you with. Fairly quickly, the DPW is proposing to lay into the actual confines of Mother's Park Road, a subterranean major pumping station, very vital to servicing a large area there. And we will be, because of that, petitioning then to the, with notice to the abudders, that we intend to discontinue Mother's Park Road as a traveled way, not only to accommodate the underground story, underground processing and pumping station, but also for safety reasons. This has been, if you know that area, as I'm sure you all do, a very, very tough road. The angles on it are such that our work is also going to contemplate rounding the southern tip of Mother's Park so that it enters into the abutting roadway at a right-hand angle. Right now, it's one of those look over your right shoulder deals if you're heading south. Very, very difficult in the sight of many near accidents, and I think some accidents of fairly serious nature. So it's part of an overall process. It's also going to involve, because Mother's Park Road is Article ninety-seven property, we're going to go to the legislature with this. At the end of the day, that Mother's Park will actually be expanded its size, and then we will also, I think, be needing, I think, I know we're going to be needing probate court assistance because of the nature of the title we gained in this was via the will of the deceased prior owner and who left it to the town and to be maintained as a park. So because we're going to alter small amounts of the confines of the existing park and actually add to it, but take off from the southern end of the tip, as I was just explaining, we do need probate court approval for that. So all of that's moving in parallel, and with that, we hope to have this accomplished with the legislative blessing by, realistically, with a new administration coming in, probably in the first half of next year to get that Article ninety-seven approval. But thank you, and we look forward to your support.
Thank you, Attorney McLaughlin. Do we have any council discussion, questions or comments? Keep moving forward. Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Steinheber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
That's eleven yeses.
Excellent, thank you. Council Cuzack, please. Last item of new business, item number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five six.
Yes, great. Can be acted upon with a roll call majority, so new business, item two zero two three dash zero five six. It's a transfer order in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars for the Planning and Development Department's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three operating expense budget for the purpose of funding the costs of print materials associated with outreach for the local comprehensive plan, as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and we have Director Jenkins with rationale, please.
Thank you, President Lebec, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. As I discussed earlier, the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee is in the process of conducting extensive community-wide outreach in connection with the first phase of our local comprehensive plan. This supplemental appropriation request is from the Planning and Development Department. It was supported by the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee by a unanimous vote taken at their meeting on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The participation plan for this project outlines a framework for overarching inclusion so that all people and groups in the town of Barnstable may impact the process. The committee stated that they would like to try to reach all of the town's residents to make them aware of this process and offer the opportunity to participate. As noted, outreach efforts have taken many forms. The first major survey associated with this effort has launched, and we will publicize it through many channels. One of those proposed channels is through a mailed postcard informing people of how they can participate in the planning process by taking the survey. This supplemental appropriation request supports the cost of a townwide mailer as well as printed posters, postcards, and signs that will be distributed within the community by the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee and PND staff. These efforts will be in addition to outreach via traditional town communication channels, including social media. Funding for this transfer will be provided from existing vacancy savings within the Planning and Development Department, and this is a one-time cost. The appropriation will not be added to the department's base budget for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. In my notes here, it actually says public hearing, but there is no public hearing for this item, just in case that confuses anybody else other than me. But there is none of that, but we are open for council discussion. Any council discussion? I do think that this is important. I think that this is part of the outreach, that it'll be necessary. It's actually been, I know it's been mentioned a number of times by constituents as the outreach has taken place to really reach, try to reach everybody in our community, make sure they have an opportunity to give their input in regards to our local comprehensive plan. So not seeing any of the discussion, I would move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Axelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yeah.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Excellent. Thanks, everybody. That was our last item of new business, and.
Move to adjourn.
Very much.
Second.
Second.
First and a second, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Excellent. Have a great night, everybody. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for hard work. Thanks, Town Manager Els. Take care.